Robert said he's gonna be able to play himself.
This meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners will now come to order. I will be delivering the invocation today, so if you all will please rise with me and then stay, remain standing for the pleasurable allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you and praising you for our many blessings. We pray that you will look upon this assembly of county leaders and fill us with the spirit of your wisdom. May we always act in accordance with your will and our decisions be pleasing in your eye. Father, we pray that you will be with the elected leaders in Washington where difficult decisions are having to be made. Please guide them and fill them also with the spirit of your wisdom. And Father, we pray that you will be with our military men and women who are in harm's way. Guide them, O Lord, that they may return home in safety and victory. We pray that you'll also bless the families and loved ones who await their return. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen, Sister.
The pleasurable allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to be made to the agenda today?
Madam Chair, I request we add under new business, an opportunity for commissioners to comment on and add to discussion that's previously been taken on the economic development corporation.
EDC discussion, that'll be added as item F.
And what's the, say again, the title? EDC.
Just EDC discussion.
That should be added to the agenda.
As new business. Or I guess under new business item F or under old business?
Well, I think it really doesn't matter, but I've asked for it under new business because it's not a matter that's up for vote, but it's just an item that there's been some new conversation, new meetings, and one commissioner had requested an opportunity to comment today since he wasn't present at a meeting last week.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Agenda passes. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments on items in the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public comments. We have two individuals who have signed up today. Tamara Brogan is first on the list.
Tamara Brogan, 2520 Waterford Court. I'm standing before you today as a concerned citizen about the recent motion that was made on June 20th about the EDC discussion about reversing some of the county funding and putting the EDC under the county manager. I'm concerned about this because even though I'm sure that John Crumpton did do an excellent job being over it, I just feel that it's wrong for government to be so tightly controlled over something like the EDC. Economic development is very important, and I feel that government involvement would taint the ability of the EDC to stay objective through different changes of government, to stay nonpolitical. I also am concerned because the EDC has done a very good job over the last couple years of recruiting businesses and helping businesses here. Recent example would be Caterpillar, and there's a few others that have happened as well recently. And I feel that we need to continue to keep them nonpolitical and to keep them right where they are. I can understand if you want to make changes and work with the EDC closely to make changes on how they might do things, but I don't feel that tearing them down and destroying what their, how they are currently made up is the right way to go at this point. You know, we have a 12 percent unemployment rate here in the county, and we're trying to recover from the recession as everyone else is as well. And now's not the time to be messing around with something that's been successful in the past, especially moving forward if you don't even really have a concrete plan, know how you're gonna move forward or have any ideas. I don't think experimentation right now is a good time to be doing that. I'm also disappointed on how the motion was set up on the 20th. It wasn't on the agenda. I felt it was very unprofessional how it came about, especially with not talking to the city of Sanford or Broadway previous to the motion being made. They have a vested interest in this county as well and into our economic development, and it's definitely a decision that should be made with all parties of the contract involved and to know everything about it before such a motion should be made. This decision has the potential of strongly being a negative effect on Lee County's economy for years to come. It's understandable, like I said, if some changes need to be made, but to totally destroy the system doesn't make any sense to me. I hope for the future of Lee County's economy that commissioners will work with the EDC closely on possible changes, but to leave them a separate corporation without tight commissioner control and rescind the motion on June 20th. We need the EDC to continue to work hard, as they have in the past, to continue our economic development progress as we try to get the economy back on track. The staff over there, the board members, they've all worked very hard over the last couple of years, and I'd like to see that continue. As a citizen of the community, I want, you know, a collaborative effort of everybody involved to work on this. Everyone should be working together. It shouldn't just be a few people running the show. It should be everybody involved. And, you know, elected leaders, don't take this the wrong way, but you don't have all the answers. We really need the input from the business community and the people on the EDC board to help us make these decisions. Thank you.
Martha Underwood?
Martha Underwood, 3309 Westcott Circle. Over the past year nationally, private employers have added 1.7 million jobs while government has cut 659,000 jobs, half of them temporary census workers, resulting in U.S. payrolls increasing by only 1 million jobs. This means there are 7 million jobs fewer than there were when the recession started in 2007. Now TV talking heads are calling this economy the new normal. I reject that thinking. We can position Lee County for a better future by tapping the potential we have here while avoiding the tax incentive bribery of wealthy, well-populated counties. Let me explain how. Lee County is an incubator for ideas that benefit America. For example, The Pantry is a Fortune 500 company that started here. Static Controls began in the founders' basement and now employs 1,000 people despite heavy damage in the April tornado. Historically, our retired hospital cook, 97-year-old Will Wildell, invented an early version of the microwave oven. He later sold his patents. Imagine what might have happened here if small business mentoring was given to this black man to manufacture and market his invention. Unfortunately, Lee County might be getting the cart before the horse by sending our tech-savvy public school children to college before securing local jobs choices that attract them home afterward. We do not have to remain a small, poor county with double-digit unemployment, oozing our best and our brightest. Look at our immediate opportunities. Base realignment is bringing thousands of officers to Fort Bragg. We are geographically halfway between Fort Bragg and Research Triangle Park where officers, well-educated wives, want high-class technical jobs. They could commute in opposite directions while living and spending their paychecks here. Big opportunity number two. Oil and natural gas has been found here and can be extracted safely by fracking if we have the courage to go forward. We have the water resources and electricity produced nearby. I encourage Lee County, consult wise planners, employ technological safeguards, and take the challenge to help America become independent of foreign oil. Lee County is small, tough, and self-reliant. We can successfully meet today's economic challenges. Commissioners, please deliberately chart our future so our small businesses and natural resources may flourish. Establish private-public partnerships, including consulting with successful company managers and forward thinkers who live here but who are not part of the establishment. And most importantly, instill in our citizenry the can-do spirit our forefathers exhibited when they proactively developed Lee County beyond our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, old business, consider the amended Lee County animal control ordinance. Mr. Talbert?
Good afternoon, Deputy County Attorney General Talbert. The agenda item I am to discuss begins with the item abstract on page 42, followed by the proposed revised animal control ordinance approved by the Board of Health. To remind the Board of the procedural posture at its meeting in June, this agenda item was before the Board of Commissioners, and it was the decision of the Board not to consider it at that date and not to vote on it, but rather to have the new ordinance placed on the county's website, which was done the following week, and add a method, a link, by which members of the public could comment on the proposed amendments. When the agenda abstract was prepared, we had one response, and only one response, and that response favored adoption of a tethering policy. Today, another one came in, and it opposed any tethering policy. So we have before you today four action, four discussion and action, the proposed amendment filed in your notebook.
What's the will of the Board here?
Madam Chair, earlier today, and I apologize again to all of the Board members, I finally completed my detailed review of the animal control ordinance. I browsed through it a couple of times in the past and felt like it was a very excellent work that was done by the Commission and the Board of Health. However, today in going back through the details, I found several items that I think require at least some tweaking. In one case, a fairly substantial change on the tethering ordinance, and I had provided to the commissioners a copy in their packets today of the red line or the markup of what I was proposing to change. I'll briefly-
Hold on just a second. Does anybody find that in your items of additional interest? Yeah, okay.
I'll just briefly address those items. One, under section 441, animals running at large, it left open what happens after a second time that a dog or cat is impounded. So I added the words "or subsequent time" after that so that it would address all subsequent activities, not just end at the second impoundment. And then under section 461, under tethering, rather than the first bullet item under A number one, the owner must at all times be outside and within eyesight of a tethered animal. For a number of reasons, I find that objectionable, though I understand the intent, I just don't think it's actionable that way or will cause it. It will be onerous on our citizenry. I felt like instead we should restore, as best we can, the time limit on tethering and not require the physical presence of the owner and suggest that the animal must not be tethered for more than 12 hours in any 1-24 hour period. And that will help us get to the intent, which is to not have an animal tethered perpetually outside their home, but rather limit that tethering for someone that has to go to work and leave the dog tethered outside for a period of time that they're at work or for overnight for the protection of the home. That would allow for that type of instance, but no more than 12 hours in any 24-hour period. I think that's about the best we can do, given where we are in this county. The other items I asked that we change under 461A4, the ending of that was redundant where it said, where it talked about proper shelter and water must be present within reach of a tethered animal. It goes on to say that any violation of that would be a violation of the ordinance. That's redundant, doesn't need to be said again. However, I think that clarifying language, appropriate clarifying language there would be that adequate shade, protection from precipitation, and access to drinking water must be within reach for the animal. It's a slight change to what they had before. It eliminates the phrase that the animal has to be, or that it's an ordinance violation, but leaves in there the essentials that an animal that's gonna be tethered for that period of time needs to have shade, protection from rain, and access to drinking water. Those are the critical elements that we heard espoused during those public comments. Then the one other area I found that I thought needed some commentary or some change was under the Authorized Enforcement Action, section 195. And under those, those are very steep penalties to impose on someone, especially this early in a change in the ordinance, to give someone, hammer someone with a $200 fine the first time that they violate this ordinance. And I felt like that it was more appropriate to reduce the level of that fine down to $50, which I think is still a fairly hefty fine, but reduce it down to $50 for the first offense, then increase it to 100 for the second, and then 200 for the third, rather than going from 200 to 400 to 500. I think that's just an outrageous fine. Most people in this county couldn't afford to pay that kind of a fine and would rather forfeit the animal rather than having to pay those steep fines. I feel that's just inappropriate to a loved pet. So, and then I also feel like that under, there are plenty of provisions, and again, I think it was an excellent job of writing up the alternative remedies that we have in county government for violations here, but I don't think we want to make criminals out of the public who accidentally or occasionally might be in violation of the code. And so I suggest that we strike that subparagraph two, which talks about issuance of a criminal citation or arrest, under all those other provisions other than the dangerous animal. The dangerous animal provision, I think that you already have a provision there for criminal activity, and I certainly agree with that, especially with the dangerous animals we have in some cases around the community, that that should be subject to criminal enforcement. But I think that these others should be civil enforcement, not criminal. I don't think I want to make criminals out of our citizenry. And I'm open to other suggestions from the Board, but I think that those were the critical areas that I found that could be adjusted and then we could pass this ordinance.
Commissioner Hayes?
I think some of these suggestions are very good and reasonable. The area that I have continued to sort of ponder and wonder where we're gonna come out on it is tethering, and I think that's something a lot of people have voiced opinions on. I wonder how we can help to move forward and ensure that tethering is enforced. In other words, if it's, if, here it says the animal must not be tethered for more than 12 hours or in any 24-hour period. How do we know if a person has tethered for more time than that? Maybe it takes an officer or someone, of course, to report that, to spot it. I kind of liked the idea of supervised tethering. I personally am not for tethering. If you look at the anatomical design of a dog or any animal, if you put a collar, chain, or what have you around its neck, and there's a lot of this, by the way, on TV and in discussion now, it's really a pretty harmful kind of practice, though I know it's gone on for years and years. But how do we, how do we make sure that tethering is not abused and that it's enforced? Is that circumstantial? In other words, like anything else, if you're caught, well, if you're caught, how does one know, how would an enforcement officer know that it had not been going on for three or four days? I mean, help me with that. I'm just raising that question. If I've got beyond tethering, I think I'm pretty good. I like particularly what you said about adequate shade, protection, and access to drinking water, because I really, I think that's very important, that we are in charge and we need to deal humanely with our animals. And the penalty, I think, is quite much of a smack, the initial one. I don't know how and why that came about, but I think to step it down is fine.
Well, I'd like to hear the county attorney speak on that. I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like to hear the county attorney speak on the assessments and the enforcement action and the badge.
The assessments of civil penalties that Commissioner Walmsley suggests are very similar to the ones found in the current ordinance, which is nearly 20 years old. I haven't done a computation to see what the cost-of-living index would now put those penalties at. Remembering that I was just providing technical advice and not suggestions as to policy to the subcommittee that considered this, I can tell you that when I was there, the Board or the subcommittee was very much in favor of increasing the penalty so that it would have some true punitive effect and deterrent effect. Maybe the penalties in there are too high. Maybe they should be reduced, but I think this Board must keep in mind that the purpose of the penalty, the primary purpose of the penalty, is to cause compliance with the animal control ordinance. So whatever level this Board decides is sufficient to do that would be appropriate for you to recommend.
And a penalty is directed at a violator, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One should not lose sight of that.
Yes, sir.
They break the law, they do not follow the rules, so one could make a case for this needs to have more, no pun intended, bite in it.
And the same is true concerning the criminal penalties. The proposed ordinance does not allow a criminal citation to be issued at first defense. It's only after a warning or an administrative penalty action that the criminal violation is looked at. And it's an option. I mean, it may be better to have that tool in one's tool pouch and just have a policy that this Board can direct that criminal penalties would not be sought, criminal action would not be initiated without the Board's approval or a subcommittee's approval.
Well, we could start at what Commissioner Walmsley has suggested, and in the future we could always increase that if we needed to, if we saw we were. The thing I would like to look at is the fact that most of this money comes back to supporting the animal ordinance. It goes to another culprit.
Well, there's two points on that. Under state law, dealing with fines, tortures, and penalties, if the action for which the penalty is imposed is a violation of the state's penal laws, for example, the dangerous animal provision, those penalties should be directed by the county to the school fund. However, if a state law does not address a violation, for example, the tethering, then those penalties could remain in the county, and it would be, again, a matter of policy for this Board to decide whether those funds are earmarked for any special purpose, such as support of the animal control or animal services section.
I'd like this Board to look at that.
I think that would be an excellent, an excellent recommendation for all those fines that are not mandated to have to go to the school fund, that they be earmarked for animal control purposes. I agree with that.
And that does not need to be in this ordinance.
That's a separate policy we would establish, yeah.
What would the steps be right now if a person called in and said or notified the Sheriff's Department or Animal Control of a violation? I don't believe in those anonymous tips and all that. I think people ought, if you've got enough concern, you ought to have enough courage to stand behind your convictions. But what happens, what's the process? Because I'm looking at the opposite side. Where are we going in terms of involving other agencies and the time it takes and the money it will take to enforce these penalties?
My understanding is that the Animal Services Section of the Sheriff's Department is developing procedures. I mean, it's in progress. But the current way in which a complaint would be handled is for an Animal Services officer to be dispatched to the scene, make independent evaluation, and if based upon facts observed or information obtained from witnesses or the owner of the animal, a violation is established by the preponderance of the evidence, then one of two things happen, depending upon the severity of it. Either the owner of the animal has explained what provisions he's violated and, in essence, given a warning, or in obvious egregious situations, a citation for civil penalty is issued.
Okay, but I guess what I'm listening for is the officer goes out, he does not find the conditions as reported at the time, so that's one trip. Whether it's true or false, we won't really know at that point in time. He gets another call a week later or a day later, he's back out there. I guess I don't want to see a situation develop where the number of patrolling deputies at night, three, number of dog unit, nineteen. We're trying to keep up with all the dog cases.
My understanding is that no deputy responds to these calls except those assigned to the Animal Services.
Point well made, but I'm saying if the occurrences keep coming up, let's not play games there. The next ever is gonna be, I need more manpower.
That's true.
That's just common sense. So that would be one of my greatest concerns. I think the welfare of the animal is certainly at the highest, of highest importance, but you also have to be reasonable, and we have to figure out something. I'm glad to hear that they are putting something together. So quite frankly, they would need to comment on any changes. But while I'm speaking and addressing changes, I'd even move to reduce this 50 and 100 to 25 and 50. Don't count a lot of people for something that you don't know when they intentionally did it or just happened. A dog will get on foot.
I know. I'm a dog owner. I got a couple of dogs myself, and they've gotten out a couple of times, and I'd hate to get slammed. I mean, the impoundment fee is already stiff enough, and getting these other fines for unintentional and occasional activities, I'd be fine with a reduced penalty as well. I was just trying to find something.
Well, good mention. We always have an opportunity to go back and revisit the penalties if that's necessary, but let's not start out bankrupting folks.
The other thing I was gonna mention about the criminal penalties, the one issue that really harbored with me was, and again, on the serious offenses, you've already made provisions in the ordinance, particularly the dangerous animal provision, you've already got criminal statutes that cover that, so we're fine there. What I'm worried about is the arbit, is it becoming arbitrary in the opinion of a particular officer about whether someone's gonna be criminally charged or get a civil charge? Because what we've done with this ordinance is we've left it open to the discretion of a particular officer, officer to make that decision about whether, what kind of citation they're gonna give someone. And I don't want to be arbitrary about our enforcement of this ordinance. I want us to be uniform, disciplined, and consistent in everything that we do. And I fear when I see these multiple options that they have, in some cases, you could give somebody a warning the first time and then slam them with a criminal penalty the second time, or you might give them a warning two or three times before you hit them with a minor hand slap with a civil fine. It just seems to be too much latitude for arbitrariness here, and I would like to see us tighten that down by eliminating the criminal piece, the criminal provisions here on all except the most severe of the offenses.
Well, this is legal advice.
Okay.
This is not policy advice. I would urge you to leave in this ordinance the possibility of imposing or instituting criminal charges.
Okay.
And as a matter of policy, control what is done.
And how would we do that?
In coordination with the Sheriff's Department.
I think you wanna, one of the problems you have right now in the setup that we had until the sheriff took control of this is the animal control officers did not have the ability for criminal charges.
Right.
You know, so that was one of the main purposes of it going to the Sheriff's Department, was so that they would have the law behind them and there could be an enforcement when things were not being corrected. I don't think it was their intention to go out and immediately file- I don't think it was their intention to go out and immediately file criminal charges with somebody. I think it was their intent to go out, get them to comply with the ordinance, and if they don't comply, then to have the teeth to do what they needed to do to get compliance.
Okay, now, again, I asked the question of how we would do that, in what form, and this is really addressed to the county manager, how would this board of commissioners then instruct the sheriff without imposing its will on the sheriff's authority? How would we go about signaling to the sheriff our intent? Because we would be usurping his authority, would we not, as the chief law enforcement officer of Lee County, by telling him, it's our policy, you don't charge someone the first time or the second time they do something that's in violation of this ordinance?
I think you have to, I think you could say it's a matter of policy that, you know, we would like for you to, you know, not pursue criminal charges first, but you have, we send these guys out into field every day using their discretion. And that's one of the things that they're trained to do, is to use their discretion in the field, and I think there has to be a level of trust there. You know, and I don't think you can make it black or white for them and say, under this particular instance, I want you to do this, and under this particular instance, I want you to do that. You know, they go out into the field and they run into a situation, they've got to be able to make the decisions themselves. So, you know, that's something I'll be glad to talk to the sheriff about, you know, tell him that, you know, our preference is civil penalties over criminal charges when it's appropriate, but, you know, I don't think you want to tie his hand that way. I want to go back to one question Mr. Hayes asked, and was one of the main reasons the health department, you know, changed the tethering rules to the supervised or visual tethering, is that I think there was a lot of comments in the public hearings that most people felt that the 12-hour tethering was not enforceable. How that would, how you would charge somebody with that and get a conviction without actually having somebody do surveillance for 12 straight hours was a concern, and it was actually a concern to the sheriffs as well. So, you know, once again, in talking with him, he'll do what the board asks, but I think that if it's the intent of the board to move towards a no tethering policy at some point, we're taking a step towards that with this. I don't think the 12 hours is a bad thing, but we'll be revisiting it again soon.
Yeah, I agree with Robert on the, I want to start from the backside. I agree with Robert on the amount of cost because I think it's far too great a penalties, and if they get into a criminal action, it's going to take more, you know, you're going to have more there anyway. On the, as far as the legality goes, I agree that we should leave the legal stuff in there. I've seen too many officers go out, run into situations, you can't cover all situations. And if we can't trust our sheriff to make a good determination off-site, then who can we trust? So I'd like to see that left alone. Tethering, I have a real problem with. I would just soon see us do away with tethering, except in the case of, say, like a local event where, you know, they have dog trials or things like that, where an owner's got a warm-blooded dog he's working with, but they're going to be, they're going to be there anyway. As far as tethering and have a person available, well, let's say they walked and, you know, they come out and the sheriff says, well, you're not here with your dog. You say, well, I just stepped in the house for a minute. Now you've got to prove it one way or the other. I think we're setting it up since that it's really not enforceable because there could be arguments all over the place. And I'd either like to see us, you know, I'd like to see us reduce it to no tethering except at, you know, dog trial events or something of that nature.
And there is on page 62, the no tethering provision that the Board of Health considered and ended up voting for the attended tethering, but that alternative the Board of Health considered does have in a language that...
Right. I'd rather see that language stay, but, you know, say basically no tethering except at these kinds of events.
I'd like to agree with that. I think that I was looking at the visual or sighted tethering as sort of a halfway step, but I think personally, I'd like to see no tethering as it was originally described. Where I don't agree, and that's okay too, is that I felt that as we were talking, I started remarking some of these fines, and I was going to suggest just the opposite of Mr. Reeves, not as high as it is indicated here, but for instance, where it says shall be subject to a civil penalty in the amount of 200, and then we struck that and put 50. I was going to say 100, sort of halfway increase on each one of those, and the reason for that is this: I think that we spent a lot of time and effort on this, and I think that, as you stated, this is, if we're not careful, we'll go back to a penalty, a financial penalty that is non-consequential, and it will be abused if we're not careful. I think if we, we don't want to just ruin a person financially, but I think if we put a sting in that penalty, it yet again says, if you violate the law, we're going to, you're going to feel it, you're going to feel it, because we don't want you to violate the law, we don't want you to violate animals. And so, you know, rather than hit them with 200 by example, I'd say we'd go to 100, but if we go the other way, down to 25 or something like that, I would have a real problem with that because I would think it would be taken by too many people as a non-event, you know, it's no big deal. It should be a big deal. This whole thing has taken a year in the development of it. This is a big deal for Lee County, and I think we ought to take it like that. The other thing that I'm kind of wondering about is, gosh, I really had hoped that we were going to be able to get this passed today, but there are a lot of good thoughts on the table. You know, it's like maybe one more time around because I like parts of everything I've heard here, and I'm kind of wondering, I'm just sort of thinking out loud with the rest of you, do we take this back to the sausage machine one more time and believe that we've got, what, nine tenths of it done, but we might make it better?
We're closer to 98% done, with that last 2% that we're haggling over.
Let's get it passed today. We can go through what Commissioner Wommack suggested, and there's some good points there, and let's just pick out the ones that we want to make, to amend this with, and go on down the road and get this thing passed. I don't have a problem with the penalties, any way you want to do the penalties.
In other words, approve it, but then come back intentionally.
Are you saying amend by motion? I really didn't make a motion, I just proposed this, but what we could do is, I could motion that we approve the changes, and then you guys come back and we'll amend with any additional changes that you want to do.
That's good, but let me ask you this question. How bad is the tethering situation in Lee County, or do you know?
I do not know.
Neither do I.
I've seen some of the tethering on some of the streets that I've driven in and out in the county, and it's bad. What, the people that tether, it's bad.
But here's what I'm pointing out. Just as you finished saying, Commissioner Wommack said we're 98%. If 98% of the people are tethering according to the description we have in the ordinance, they're doing a good job. They're doing what we even agree with in terms of tethering. If 2% of the population is causing the problem, why don't we focus on the 2% and not make everybody feel like they're doing something wrong if they tie their dog? You know, a part of this comes from all the publicity in some of these other counties, and I understand that. I know that. But those are situations that you can readily see where a person has 10 or 15 dogs tied up in the yard. You can see that, and the sheriff deputies can see that, the animal control folks can see that. That's an entirely different situation than my aunt taking her pomeranian and sticking him outside and saying, he needs to be out in the first year, but I don't want him to run out in the street, I don't want him to leave the yard. She's not going to buy a chain link fence to keep that pomeranian in, and she's not going to give him up and die to fight. So the issue is, in my opinion, how bad are the conditions as a whole, not just one or two people or 2% of the population? How bad is it as a whole? And until I have some idea what that is about, you know, I don't want to react to Robinson County or Cumberland County or Wake County or Orange County. I don't want to react to that yet.
I guess the only thing that I have to say, Robert, is at some of the hearings that we were at, where some of the veterinarians described what they had brought in to them here in this county, no other county, but here in this county. I went to pick up a person for Highway to Healing one day. They had a dog tethered on a three-foot leash. It was nothing but a solid wire tied around his collar. They had no water, no visible food. It was under a plastic, I don't know, some sort of cutaway plastic barrel for the shelter, and the dog was vicious. That's, you know, just one firsthand experience. I saw it out in the county, one dog that was tethered, but he was wrapped around a tree, didn't know enough to go back around the tree to get loose to get to his water and stuff. You know, those are just a couple of examples. How, you know, percentage-wise, how bad is it? I don't know. I just feel like that the way it's written is still unenforceable because you can't, you don't know how long a person's been away or anything else, and that's, in our sheriff's department, are we giving them something unsurmountable to do? I don't know.
In response to that, then maybe what we're doing today is the right thing. Pass what we can amend, move forward, and then take a look at what the sheriff comes up with and do a...
Excellent idea. Excellent idea.
Just let me offer one other comment about this tethering business, and recognize that what we've allowed for 20-plus years is a no provision addressing tethering. So you've got a full range of circumstances now in the community where you've got people that have dogs on three-foot rope chains around a tree with no overhead protection, no access to water, and no enforceability on the part of the sheriff's department. And what we've moved to here is a fairly extensive provision that would allow for some limited tethering. And in my mind, when you're going from, if you try to go from a no restriction to a no allowance, you're running from one end of the spectrum to the other with no transition, and that's what I think Commissioner Reeves is getting at, that's what my concern is. I don't tether my dogs, I just don't. But I do occasionally keep a dog from one of my friends, and when I do, I live right on Highway 421. I don't want that dog running out into 421 and getting run over while I'm looking after that dog from my friend. And one of the ways that I'm able to tether, I'm able to get that dog the necessary exercise and fresh air, is I tether it on a 30-foot covered chain that's coated on a run that goes up and down my side yard, which gives him about, you know, half an acre and access, and plenty of shade and drinking water, and I would be in violation of the ordinance that you're proposing, Charlie. I would be in violation of that, doing what I do for my friend. I would have to either put an enclosure up, or I wouldn't be able to keep that dog for my friend, I would have to tell him to take it to a kennel. You know, I just think we're going way too extreme, and I understand, notwithstanding the veterinarians' comments, which are very good, because they see the worst of the worst. Those dogs that get in that are abused or brought into the veterinarians, I clearly understand why they're in favor of no tethering, because it's abused. But I say, let's not punish the law-abiding citizens who do a fair job of taking care of their animals by going to a no permissive, or no permission for tethering under any circumstances. Because I think what you've done now is you've given the sheriff a charter that he's going to be, he's going to constantly out there making code enforcement visits because he's now going to be in the tethering, the anti-tethering business. He's going to be out there running around on every complaint call that every care person out there is going to call, about every time they see a rope chain on some dog or some coated wire, they're going to call a complaint in, and the sheriff's going to be constantly running out and having to make warnings and then having to go back and tell them to stop. I would think an in-the-middle solution for now, and if it doesn't work to the desired end state that we're after, then we can tighten it up later, but I think going from one extreme to the other is just way too premature.
But how do, how does the sheriff enforce the 12-hour? I mean, how is that enforced? I think Charlie's point was simply that.
And I do agree, the burden of proof becomes very difficult at that point, to say that someone left their dog chained for more than 12 hours. But I think the point here is, is that if someone's got them on a three-foot tether, or if they've got them where there's no access to water or no access to shelters, that certainly can be observed, okay? That part can. The 12 hours is our signal to the community that tethering is not a preferred approach, and short-duration tethering is what we're after. And then over time, if someone wants to sit there and keep a clock on that dog for 12 hours and say that dog's been out there longer than 12 hours, if they care enough about it, they'll do that, or they'll file multiple complaints, and at some point, then we will put a clock on the dog.
There's nothing to actually deal with until there is a complaint.
Right.
So once the 12 hours call, you'll either have a witness or self-incrimination, which I doubt very seriously, so you don't have an issue until someone reports it, and if you don't accept anonymous, which can get in bringing a whole world of different things, you don't really have an issue to deal with. You just say, if in 12 hours I come back and this dog has knocked down his tree, or you can do it as you want. Martin will give the right answer.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Okay.
That we pass this animal ordinance and using the amendments that Commissioner Wommack submitted, 441, 461, and...
The changes in the...
4195.
4195. The changes in the penalties.
Right, and then that, 25, 50, and 100 on the penalties.
Or I'll take the dog in, but...
Okay. We have a motion. I think all the discussions have already been had, but does anybody have any further discussion on the motion, which is to pass the animal control ordinance with the amendment or the proposed changes as submitted by Commissioner Wommack? And the civil penalties reduced to 25, 50, and 100. Commissioner Reeves?
I was only going to say, and in those cases where the sheriff elects to take criminal action, I would ask that we have a meeting with the sheriff during those times so that we fully understand what caused him to move from...
And we don't want to...
And if we have a problem with that, we can always address it later.
Okay, but does that include the fact that on the civil penalties, are we still going to allow the sheriff to have the ability to decide what the civil penalties are, so that's not part of the amendment?
We're putting here the civil penalties, and we're leaving in the criminal citation options.
That's what, okay.
That's in there, but if he does it, you know, for the benefit of the board, we may ask for an explanation.
Yeah, I just wanted an explanation as to whether that was part of it.
So that would actually represent a change to what I had suggested, where I had asked to reduce number, parenthetical reference two under four, 195?
Yeah.
I'll amend my own motion, or actually, it's your motion now, but I would offer that we can leave number two in for the criminal provisions that were in there, per our attorney's recommendation, to leave it in. I'll support that as well, leaving that in, but before the sheriff, we need to have some discussion with the sheriff about, you know, him arbitrarily using criminal citations rather than civil citations.
Mr. Talbot, I'll have that immediately.
His changes.
Right, when we get his policy, okay.
I'd like to answer before we vote one other question. Does anybody, is there anybody else that would wish to? I would see the penalty up, not down, that is, not to 100, 200, and 300. And I'm going to be pleased that we pass this thing, but is there anybody else that feels that it should be more rather than less?
We can always raise them later.
Not if they got a heart, my God. Christ, making money off of this. That's terrible. Very good.
Okay. To clean this up, Doc, since you made the motion, can I have you withdraw that one and make it again so that we...
How about, if you withdraw your motion, I'll motion it.
I'll withdraw mine, okay. Commissioner Wommack.
Madam Chair, I move that we pass the animal control ordinance with the suggested language changes that I've submitted today, with the exception of the last page... language changes that I've submitted today, with the exception of the last page under sub-paragraph two, so that instead of striking from the original ordinance, the criminal citations are provisions for criminal citation, that we leave those in. Otherwise, everything else as, as suggested in my submission.
Amounts of the...
Oh, actually, the amounts, the amounts I've got here are 50, 100, 200. On the, on the civil, Commissioner Reeves had recommended that they be reduced. You can amend that motion if you want to, to, to reduce them.
25, 50, and 100.
Yeah, if you want them with 25, is that what you want them?
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the animal control ordinance with the changes in this handout, except we're leaving in 4195, section two, to allow the sheriff to have the, the criminal citation options. We are leaving these penalties the same, so I need an amendment to Mr. Wommack's motion to change the amount of the civil penalties.
So moved.
Okay, so we're changing, we have an amendment to change to 25, 50, and 100. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Amendment passes. Now we have an amended motion to adopt the animal control ordinance as amended in the civil penalty amount sections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Phew, okay.
You know, remind me somewhat of the... What a committeration.
Dumping, a little dumping.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, now, I think yours is going to be short and sweet, right? You're next on the agenda, appointment to boards and commissions.
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, you will remember at your last meeting on June 20th, you made appointments to the boards and commissions, but we had several boards that we did not have individuals to be placed on. So on June 25th, I ran another ad in the Sanford Herald. From that posting, I received two applications that I'm presenting to you today for the Parks and Rec Board.
Now, do we have three openings on the Park and Rec? A regular, full-time vacancy created by Mr. Keith Clark's submitted resignation, and then we have the two alternate positions, is that correct?
That's correct. So if you accept these two applications, I need to know how you want them, or where you want them placed on the board. If you want one in a regular position, one in an alternate, or both of them as alternate, or whatever.
Do we have any alternates, current alternates that have not been moved up yet?
No. We've already taken care of that at the last meeting.
Well, wouldn't our obligation be to fill the board and seek alternates? Wouldn't that be a better, wouldn't that be a solution?
We have three, you have three openings?
I have three openings, one regular member and two alternate positions.
And you got a total of what, two?
Two.
One becomes the regular, one becomes the alternate.
But which do you want me to put in the regular and which do you want me to put as alternate?
If he's the one who voted for me, I'll...
I think this is Commissioner, pass the board. Let's have him put in there. What are you thinking?
And do you know either one of these individuals who applied?
I don't know either one.
I would, I would just like to put in a plug for Nicole Ingram, Coalition of Families. I would like to say that I, that I know her only casually, but I would like to say that I, that, and I would like to see a represent, representation in other, from another organization in the, in the community to be on the Parks and Rec. I know the Coalition of Families has some interest in the Parks and Recreational activities. And I, and I look, her list of references, number one on her list is someone I, I hold near and dear in their, their judgment of character, and that's Sandra Boyd from our Health Department. So I, I would endorse her.
So you want to make a motion to that?
I would move that we, we appoint Nicole Ingram to the, to the Parks and Recreation Board, and that we, that we also congratulate Ray Monte in being a first alternate.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. So we're still looking for one alternate there, so...
Well, you're looking at for one alternate there, plus you have all these other vacancies that we're not having much luck with. Do I have, do you have any suggestions on how to get individuals to...
Just so the public who may watch these on TV, the boards that we have vacancies for are Agriculture Advisory Board, one from the Pocket District, one from the East Sanford District, American with Disabilities, we have three vacancies on that board, Sanford Board of Adjustments, one vacancy, the Environmental Affairs Board, one vacancy, Parks and Rec, we now need one alternate, Rest Home Nursing Home, Rest Home Nursing Board, four, and Sanford Planning Board, one. And I got a call over the weekend from the citizen who serves with me on the Mental Health Board, and she's been promoted in her job here and is not going to be able to go to West End with me once a month, so she's going to submit her resignation to you, so we will have that Mental Health Board one to fill also.
Okay. I do have one application in my office for the Environmental Affairs Board that I did not get it resolved in time to get it in the packet, so that one will be for the next meeting and hopefully some additional applications.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, you will get your list of those vacancies, just give me a list of them, so I, I know one of them's Agriculture Board, I'm going to try to see about that here. I think I can get somebody to do that.
Okay, those are on page 64 in your general package.
Onto new business. Presentation approval of North Carolina Cardinal membership agreement. Mike Motocik. This is page 68 of your packet.
We appreciate you taking time to listen to our proposal about the North Carolina Cardinal program. I'd like to thank a few people, though, who've helped me very, very much in getting this before you. One is Mr. Talbert, whom you know. The other is Mr. Edwards of the IT Department, whom you know. Also, two library people who've helped greatly over several months to get these things in order, Michael Williams and Nathan McGeehee. But most of all, I'd like to say thank you in advance to the person who's going to give a short presentation to you, Mr. Grant Pear from the State Library in Raleigh. He's the program director of this and the moving force behind it. Before I welcome him up to the podium, I would like to say that you'll see down below on the abstract that there's a savings to the IT Department for vendor fees and maintenance. That's very attractive in a difficult budget year, but if this was a very good budget year, we'd still bring this to your attention because we think the whole program is a, is a very good idea. So without further ado, I give you Mr. Grant Pear.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you briefly about what NC Cardinal is and to give you the chance to ask me any questions that you may have. Feel free to ask at any point as I go along. There we go. That's my name, Grant Pear. I'm the program director of NC Cardinal. I'm with the State Library of North Carolina, which is a division of the Department of Cultural Resources in Raleigh. What is NC Cardinal? Well, it's a shared library automation system. We are sponsoring it with federal library funds. It replaces the locally managed system that you currently use, and it would free up the library from having to purchase and maintain servers and pay software and support fees to run that local system, so that's where your savings would come from. You pay annual fees for that now. Who is participating? These are some of the libraries that have already signed this membership agreement. The first two, Cleveland County and the city of Kings Mountain, are already using the system. The next five, Buncombe, Davidson, and Franklin Counties, and the two regional libraries in the western part of the state are in the pipeline to go live over the next several months. We have two libraries that are pending agreement, Lee County and Davie County. In the next fiscal year, July 2012, going forward, we expect to add eight or nine additional libraries. And with our current budget allocation, we think we can probably afford about 25 to 30 of the public libraries in North Carolina, after 77 of them. So at our current allocation, we think we can go about that far. What you have to do to participate, three main things. One is that you have to agree, the local library has to agree to treat patrons from all participating libraries as though they were your patrons when they come to your library and vice versa. So that means that if you have a Lee County library card and you're in Asheville or Cashers or someplace that is a participating library and you want to borrow a book, they would check it out to you just as though you were a patron at their library and vice versa. So that's one of the things everyone who participates agrees to do because the state is providing the money. You also have to agree to collaborate with the other participating libraries on issues that affect this shared system, because everyone is sort of in the same pod. There are some things that have to be decided on as a group, and the participating libraries will be part of a council where we bring them together periodically to discuss these issues and have everyone reach agreement. And then the third thing is you have to provide enough internet bandwidth to make it work. And having spoken with Mr. Edwards, I don't think that would be an issue here. What does it cost you? Well, the State Library is paying all costs for access to the system using our federal funds. The library would receive a one-time federal grant to cover all the one-time costs to move you from your current system to the new system. The ongoing subscription cost would be paid by the State Library annually to the third-party vendor that we've hired to do this. The library would continue to pay for local hardware as usual, they do already, PCs, printers, barcode readers, and other things that work with the system. And then whatever the cost for internet bandwidth, the library would continue to be responsible for that. That's my summary. Do you have any questions?
Grant, I, Mike, over here. My question is, how did you, how did you come about choosing Lee County? Or did we come to you?
You came to us.
Okay, I'd like to congratulate Mike Motocik for having the sense and the, and the fiscal responsibility to go do that. I think that's, that's a marvelous request. I, I'm just curious, why aren't all the libraries, all the county library systems around the state asking to do this?
Well, there's different degrees of dissatisfaction with their current circumstances. Budget pressures are different elsewhere. A lot of people are signed into long-term contracts and can't get out. I don't expect, because we're persuasive, not coercive, we would never get everybody because that's just not how it works.
Right.
But we'll, we have a lot of interests, as many as 50, but I don't think we can afford that.
Let me ask you another question about, about technology. By signing on and agreeing to support other clientele from around the state, I think that's a great thing to do, because I'd like to see us have a reciprocal arrangement with other library systems as well, particularly for interlibrary loan, which I know we already have, but it might help expedite that as well, expand it maybe. I'm curious, are there, how about eBooks and that sort of thing? Will that, will that give us any benefit in the area of electronic media, any other benefits other than what we might already know about?
That's a somewhat complicated question. This software works to allow you to use eBooks integrated through it to check them out and circulate and so forth, if you already have a subscription to that. Other participating libraries do. Most of them probably will not be circulating eBooks to other users because it's a licensing problem.
Okay.
So it, it doesn't put a barrier there, it's not necessarily going to take you further down that road.
Okay.
Who makes up the Cardinal, your Cardinal Council?
Each library has a representative, it's usually the director that is a voting member of the Cardinal Council.
Okay.
Each library that has signed a membership agreement.
So, I guess this is for Michael, have we estimated what our total cost is to switch over to this system?
The State Library will be paying that through a federal grant.
Okay, but you said we still have PCs and broadband and all that kind of stuff, so...
You probably wouldn't encounter the need to replace your PCs because of making this change if they were old and you were going to replace them anyway. It's not likely to require you to upgrade any equipment, but if we determine that it does, that's one of the provisions that we would make in the migration agreement. If we see that it's going to force you to upgrade equipment in an unusual way, like certain kinds of very specialized printers, we would take that into account when we do the grant. It's a little too soon for us to know that.
Can we, can we ask Kyle to comment on that as well, if he's got any, anything he wants to add?
As far as the peripherals you mentioned, Mr. Parks, those shouldn't be an issue. We're going to, those would stay on our continual PC replacement scale, schedule, so those really should be outside of the Cardinal system totally.
Okay, how about the broadband though?
Broadband is fine.
Is it up there already?
Yep, already up there. And we've got management in place that allows us to kind of segment different pieces of bandwidth for different applications, so we can, we can prioritize that as a share.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, I make a motion that we, we approve this move to NC Cardinal system. I think it's a, it's a magnificent change, and I'm glad to see we're embracing this, this initiative.
Motion has been made to approve the North Carolina Cardinal membership agreement as presented to us. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Thank you. Especially thank you for the brief presentation. You can't have a word.
Are there any training classes?
Okay, next on the agenda is to consider a voting delegate for the August North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. John?
Well, I didn't read the item abstract before when the agenda packed, but I assume that means I'm the only, you know, one attending. There are no commissioners attending the conference?
It's down in Concorde, right?
It's in Concorde at the new Embassy Suites Conference Center. I had planned on going, so if...
Is the deadline passed for members? What do they vote on in August? Is it just the membership, the leadership of the organization? They're not deciding legislative goals and whatever at that point in time, right?
Most of this is, is policies and procedures for the association and officers.
Okay.
Yeah, the legislative stuff doesn't, and we're in the short session, so we probably won't be voting on that until February or March.
And if some of us have actually been following some of these people who are applying to us for wanting to be elected to leadership positions, we have a Board of Commissioners meeting on August 15th, which is prior to that. Can we see what all they're going to be voting on so this board can...
Absolutely. The agenda should be ready by then for, for what the votes will be.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to offer the, I was, I was inclined to want to attend the NC ACC, but the location and the cost of doing that were, were fairly substantial to, and I, and I, it's just a little too far to commute back and forth during that period, so I felt like that, you know, it'd be better for me not to have to bear that cost personally or to pass it on to the taxpayers. I do think it's appropriate to have representation there, and if no other commissioner's going, I certainly have no reservations of empowering county manager to do that. I'd just like the citizens to know that, that, that it's not because we don't care as commissioners that we wouldn't drive down there. It is a fairly substantial cost to go down there and stay overnight, and I don't want us to be accused of taking any trips to San Francisco or anything like that. I mean, I really want to be fiscally prudent and, and, and I would really like for folks to know that we, that one representative should be able to carry back to us the information we need. And I think some of this we can probably, we can probably pull down off the web or monitor through, through webinar anyway. So I, you know, I would, I think that it's appropriate to have the county manager go if he's the only representative from, from the county that's going to be in attendance.
Is that a motion?
I'm just making a comment.
I'll motion that we appoint county manager to attend the second meeting.
Motion's been made to appoint the county manager as Lee County's voting delegate for the annual NC ACC conference. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Beautiful downtown Concorde.
There we go. Item C under new business, presentation approval of tax collector's annual settlement. Dwayne Brinson, this is page 74 in your abstract or in your manual.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Apologize for my presentation's probably not going to be so brief. It, the Lee County annual tax collector settlement, it covers our performance of the last fiscal year, and it's also the opportunity for the board to charge me as the county tax collector with collecting next fiscal year taxes. So let's begin, what is settlement, for those that may not know? There are two applicable statutes. You've got 105-373, which says that a tax collector must make settlement at the first meeting of the governing board in July for fiscal year 2011 and prior year taxes. Also, 105-321... Also 105-321, it, it describes the order of collection and it says that the order of collection that the board gives me has the same effect as a judgment, an execution. So that order of collection is very powerful and it notifies people that the tax lien is the first in priority. So the process, well, per the state law, the governing board must charge tax collector with current fiscal year taxes and prior year taxes and the governing board must consider our performance and our numbers that you have in your packet and approve or deny settlement. Items to be included in the annual settlement per law. First is a preliminary report, which includes 2010 delinquent real property taxes, personal property taxes and motor vehicle taxes. Each list is on file with the clerk to the board and has already been provided. The insolvent list is required as part of settlement, but we do that before the new fiscal year begins. We did that in the last meeting in June. It's, it's more efficient and more effective from an accounting perspective, so we've already written off those 10-year taxes. Settlement for current year taxes, which is what we're doing in this session. And then disposition of tax receipts after settlement, which again relates primarily to the insolvent list, giving the tax collector credit for those that are insolvent and being unworthy of paying. So review of performance in this fiscal year just ended 2011. There are mainly two categories of property tax. You have your real and personal property, which includes public utilities, business property and of course your real estate homes. You can see there are three columns. We have an adjusted levying, the actual collections and the uncollected amount. The adjusted levy takes into account the releases and refunds throughout the year. For the real and personal property category, we collected 98.52% of the total adjusted tax levy. And again, this is for fiscal year ended 2011. Registered motor vehicles category, it's a, it's a problem throughout every county in the state. Registered motor vehicles, you can see our levying, what we collected and what we still have remaining. We collected 87.02% of motor vehicles, which sadly is about the state average for every county. And I'll come back to this in just a second, but I'll move on to our overall collection percentage. So when you take the total levying with what we collected and what we have remaining, the overall collection percentage for fiscal year 2011 is 97.66%, which is a new plateau for us. It's the highest ever in our history, which I think says a lot for the staff considering the, the high unemployment. We still have that, the large taxpayer out in the Cape Fear District that still is not paid, so that drew us down a little more. And again, with the budget constraints that we face, it's, it's a pretty remarkable number. Let me go back to the motor vehicle number. We have made vast improvements in motor vehicle collections, but still, the collections manager ran a report for delinquent motor vehicle accounts that we can collect on in this fiscal year. In any given fiscal year, we can collect on 11 different tax years, the current year plus 10, 10 back years. You can use enforced collections for 10 years after a tax bill becomes due, which is September 1st, real and personal property. So looking at those, this is just a delinquent report, so looking at the 10 prior tax years just in motor vehicle, just in delinquent motor vehicles, there are 18,140 bills for motor vehicles, outstanding delinquent, which amounts to a little over 1.2 million dollars in actual tax levy. That's not all county money. That includes fire districts or the city, but regardless, that's, I told the county manager, that's almost a budget solution in itself. So I, I have some, some free options that we're going to explore this next fiscal year and I think we should consider getting more aggressive with these motor vehicles.
Let me ask you a question right there, Dwayne. How many of those vehicles, if you, if you know this number, how many of those vehicles would still be on the road from delinquent years prior to this year?
These are tagged motor vehicles, so the tax, when you get back into 2001 and 2002 taxes, we, we made a very aggressive approach a couple of years ago collecting a lot of these taxes. And we found people in Arizona and Nevada and, you know, people that moved back in 2003 and they, they didn't know about this motor vehicle bill. So the principal amount of their bill, it was, the interest is almost as much as that.
Okay.
Because the interest has been accruing all the time. So as far as ones that are actually on the road, I can't really say, but, you know, this tax is on the tag. Whenever they renewed the tax, it generated the tax.
So if, so if, for example, if I had, if I had a vehicle that I had on the road until two years ago, when it might've been damaged in a car accident determined by the insurance company to be not, you know, repairable economically and I, and I removed the tag, turned it into DMV and kept getting a bill from you and it appears on this thing, would that, would that still be a part of what you're, you're tallying?
Yes, sir.
It would. Unless somehow or another I consummated the deal with you as well by saying, get it out off the books or here's proof that I've turned in the tag, it's no longer operational.
The statutes gives each taxpayer that turns in their tags one year to turn in that FS20 form to us. If they come in and turn that form into DMV to us, then we'll prorate that tax throughout the tax year for the amount of months that they had the bill for.
Right.
So, you know, yeah, it would be on here? The full amount would be on here, wouldn't it likely?
I just, I'm just curious because I see a low collection rate, but I also know that there are all kinds of permutations of reasons why people, they either, they move out of the county and they choose not to pay that old tax bill, or they're still living in the county, but they choose, but they had a car that's no longer serviceable and they just decided not to pay the tax. Just curious about how much of that really, if there were vehicles that are still operational and we tried to do enforcement or, or their vehicle's in risk of being impounded, I'm certainly, I'm, I'm sure we'd get a higher collection rate at that point.
Absolutely. There are so many out there that I would hope the word of mouth, but that would get out because there's no way we could tackle all these with the, with the current resources we have. But yeah, that would, that would be a step in the right direction.
That's a question. How, how do you handle a motor vehicle? Say someone's got a vehicle, a motor blows up in their pocket, their backyard, does that come off the tax books or do you have, do you tax that, do you keep taxing that vehicle?
If it, if it doesn't have a tag on the license, on the license plate, they have to list it in a listing period in January as an untagged vehicle. And then it's considered personal property versus a registered motor vehicle. So if it's untagged, they have to list it with their boat or their jet ski or any business property they have. But if it's, if it's tagged through the DMV, got a good license plate on it, then whenever they renew that tag, that's what dictates the tax cycle.
Okay, then how do you, or can you renew the tag if you haven't paid the taxes on that vehicle?
We have a block on that tag, but a lot of people go get a new tag. Because the tax is not on, the block is not on the VIN number, the block is not on the person, it's not on the car, it's on the license tag. So that doesn't stop people from getting new tags.
But yet, when you, when you go buy your tag and everything, the VIN number and everything's there, why wouldn't you use that number?
The, the only resources we can do is to block the license tag.
That's a, that's a DMV issue, Charlie. We would have to get DMV to help us with that enforcement there. Something legislature did.
And when I sent out, when I sent out an electronic version of the delinquent list, I guess it was last week to the entire board.
And Mr. Parks asked me, I talked about how difficult motor vehicles were for us and
the rest of the state. He said, so what's your solution? And I presented three or four different options and I spoke with the county manager and he's, he's well aware of this, but there's a bill out there, House Bill 1779. I think it was started in 2005. It's been delayed twice, but that system, it becomes an integrated system with a DMV and the county tax office, where when someone goes in to renew their tag in the DMV, they pay their tax right then and there. I'm optimistic, I like to think that people go into the DMV, they renew their tags, they get a tax bill three months later, they set it aside on the counter and just forget about it. And I, I think that's backed up in the evidence because as I'll show you in a minute, the collections percentage one year out increases because of people coming in to pay motor vehicle bills.
Part of that is personal property too, though. Is that underneath the personal property up, up above? Because whenever you get your tax bill for personal property, if you haven't paid that, you can't renew your tag anyway, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah. Motor vehicles, motor vehicles do not become a lien on real estate or on personal property. So yeah, it's, you can renew, you can renew, renew your tags if you haven't paid your business personal or your real estate tax. That's, like I said, the block is only on the license tag itself. The DMV has no way of knowing if they have delinquent real estate.
And that's controlled by the state.
Yes.
Dwayne, let me ask you this question. If we, if, and I suppose we could do this, I don't know, Mr. Teller, if you want to comment on it. If we were to empower you to impose a fine, if something is more than six months in arrears, an additional fine on top of the, the, the amount in arrears, would that, you think that would help improve, if we're allowed to do that, would that help improve the collection rate?
I don't think we can impose a fine for being delinquent. I think what we could do is take enforced collections measures.
Well, I'm talking about, actually, let me say it better, a fee for having to collect, for having to do special collection mechanisms.
And we do that. We, for garnishments, it just, it was going to change August 1st, but for garnishments, we charge $15 per service, it's going up to $30 per service. If we choose to repossess these cars or impound cars, whatever we decide to do, we can pass along the, the record fees or impound fees along to the taxpayers. So they have to pay those fees before they get the car back. So any, any additional cost we incur, we do pass along to the taxpayers.
Okay. You jump back to the owner.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Any more questions on motor vehicles for legal? As I said, in any given tax year, we can collect on 11 different tax years. We have the current year, which is for this settlement purposes, is 2010, 2011. And then we have all the way back to 2000, 2001. You can see that in 2009, 2010, that our collection percentage jumped up and as I said, that's mostly due to motor vehicle collections. People going to the DMV, trying to renew their tags, finding out they have a block on that tag and then finally coming in to pay. But they can't renew that tag until that block is removed. And that block isn't removed until the tax is paid. So that's why you see the big jump there. Up in 2000, 2001, you can see the adjusted balance at the beginning of June, or I'm sorry, at the beginning of July 2010, and you can see what we collected. The year in balance is zero in 2000, 2001 because we wrote off those taxes from accounting perspective. They are more than 10 years delinquent now, so we can't use enforced collections on them anymore. They can still come in and pay if they want to, we can't use enforced collections.
Question about the tags. You've got a block on a tag, but you said a while ago that sometimes they just turn around and come back in and get a new tag. Is there any way to block that so that they can't get a new tag for anything until they pay for the old one?
I wish we could put a block on the VIN number or something like that, but I don't, I don't think we can. The best thing we do from a policy standpoint is if they come in to pay the tax on a tag that's been blocked. If there's a more delinquent bill in our system, then we're going to collect on that delinquent bill first because otherwise we're not going to get that money. So we do pull up their account, everything they own, everything they're responsible for, and we try to get the most delinquent tax money first. And that's, you know, that's kind of the best we can do in-house without asking the DMV.
Okay, let me ask this a different way then. If somebody comes in to renew their tag, finds out it's blocked, so they leave and they come back, but their name still is associated with that blocked tag.
We would try to collect on that delinquent bill.
So if somebody comes in to say, hey, I want a new tag, tries to buy a new tag, wouldn't, would that pop up to say, you know, hey, you've got outstanding on this other tag, we're not going to sell you a new tag till you settle that?
Yeah, and I think that's getting into the intricacies of the DMV system, but if, yeah, if, if John Doe gets a block on his tag, he chooses to get a new tag, if he does get that new tag, then a tax is generated. And yeah, we would try to collect on any delinquent bills that he has.
I would say if there's some way we could block him getting anything until he pays his bill, because obviously he's not going to pay the bill on a new one, so.
Exactly.
Well, the problem is the DMV IT systems because that's exactly why this has been postponed. They didn't have the infrastructure, the way to upgrade the DMV system to allow for payment of tax as well as renewal of tags. So I wrote that down. I think that's a legislative goal that we need to have going forward.
That is. And you look at, we're a small county, but we have an, have about an average collection rate in motor vehicles. And if you extrapolate those numbers out to the rest of North Carolina counties, that's a lot of tax money.
All right.
Just in motor vehicles that's being left on the table each year.
Yep.
The enforced collections, just a review of what we've done. We have a four-year contract with Zacchaeus Legal Services, which began in, I think, October 2008. So we still have about another year with Zacchaeus. Just in this fiscal year, we put 542 parcels through the foreclosure process. As of now, we have not submitted any to Zacchaeus. We have, the 542 number is just the amount of letters that we've sent out or payment agreements we've set up, in-house measures, I guess, we don't know anything right now. And you see how effective the program has been. Total tax collected since we started this just a few years ago is about 21.6 and 1 and 3/4 million dollars. So there was a lot of tax outstanding, kind of like the motor vehicle thing. We had a lot of real property tax outstanding and we got a lot of that in. And it, and it's helping us each year, having, having the teeth behind that, I guess. The garnishments, bank attachments, rent attachments, et cetera, almost 4,100 of those sent out this year, which averages out to about 17 per working day. And you think about finding the employee, delinquent tax, finding the employer, doing the paperwork, think about everything that's involved in just one garnishment. That's a lot. Also, as part of the settlement, I have to, I have to report my efforts in involving outside units in collecting our taxes per 105-364. Because we issue so many garnishments and we have such an effective foreclosure program, we probably did two or three certifications to other counties saying that we can't find any property that this taxpayer, that this taxpayer owns in Lee County and we need your help. So very minimal efforts in that. And we have started participating in the NC Debt Setoff Program, which allows us to attach income taxes as they become available. Again, the problem with that is in due process, if you want to call that a problem, I guess. We have to, we have to get the taxpayer a notice after the bill is 30 days delinquent that they're, that we're going to attach to their state income tax. And then I believe it's another 30 or 60 days after that notice before we can send the list to the DOR. So you're looking March, April timeframe before you actually can attach those income taxes. Well, the problem is that most people already have their income taxes done in March or April, so it's not effective until the next tax year. It stays on until the next January and February, but that's why you see the numbers growing each year. We are doing more and more of it.
Can you settle that sooner?
The tax bill becomes delinquent after January 5th. And then by law, we have to give them 30 days before we send the second notice and then we have to give them another 30 days. So the very soonest we can send them out would be, I mean, nearly in March, very early. And we, we do get them out as soon as we can because it's very effective.
Just one other question. When you attach it to the income, do you, how does that, what does the violate? I was just gonna...
If he has a refund.
Yeah, I mean, what, what effect would that have on me if, if I were to have mine attached? What's...
You would get a notice saying that your income taxes have been attached for X amount of dollars.
You're talking about refunds, right?
Income tax refunds.
Refunds.
If you're due a refund from the state.
It's based on a return, it would have to be, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
No other way to dock you, I mean...
There's no other way to dock wages or earnings?
Yeah, we do our own wage garnishment.
Okay.
Yeah, we do that. If we can, we request a list of employees from each of the major employers in Lee County and, you know, all kinds of efforts in that. And bank attachments, if we have a good bank information for taxpayers. So a lot of measures we can take, it's just, each one is so time consuming.
Right.
And would that attachment continue to be applied into the next tax year?
We have NC Debt Setoff. We have to update our amounts, or we update our amounts occasionally because a lot of people do come in and pay and if we don't update the amounts, then it results in refunds and releases, but yet it stays in effect. So how do we compare? Lee County's a small county, so we try to use our financial resources to the best of our ability. And I wanted to show you a little graph that we did this year. It compares Lee County to other counties with similar tax base figures. The tax base numbers are from fiscal year ended 2010, so they're each a year or two old, but the collection percentages from the last fiscal year that just ended. We actually called each one of those counties and got an overall collection percentage. called each one of those counties and got an overall collection percentage. And you can see that when you look at similar counties, and I realize there are a lot of different variables that we could look at for collection percentage, but looking at counties that have similar financial resources as I think we would, given the tax base, you can see the comparison. We've got one county down at 90%, you've got Franklin County is closest to us at 97.10%. So when you compare us to our peers, we are performing at a good level. So I want to take that one step farther and compare us to the population group, the statewide average, and then the 100K population group. This graph uses fiscal year into 2010 data as well, except for the very first row, which is our last year overall collection percentage. If you want to compare exactly apples to apples, then our fiscal year into 2010 collection percentage was 97.56. But regardless, our collection percentage was 97.66% this last year. Looking at our population group, and keep in mind that we are at the low end of our population group. Our population group average is 96.19%. Looking at the state as a whole, the state average is 97.18%. And then I want to take it one step farther and compare ourselves to the big boys, the Wake County, the Mecklenburg County, Gilbert County, the counties that can almost give verbal commands to their tax software. Their collection percentage is 97.66%. So you can see, even though that we are a small county, we try to stay within our financial means, we try to defy that from a performance standpoint. We try to be exceptional, and I think that's a very good representation of part of what we put in. Historical analysis. This chart's back seven different years, and it shows that the bottom of the charts is 96.34%, and you can see how we've progressed up each year. A marketable increase from 96.92% to 97.64% between fiscal years 2008, 2009. Now, if you use fiscal year 2008 as a base, the 96.92%, each one of those 97s, 97.64, the 97.56, 97.66, each one of those represents about $250,000 in more money to the county each year. And that's in just current year collections. Keep in mind that we also have built a very aggressive foreclosure program, participating in NC Debt Setoff, doing more enforced collections. So that's just in current year money that we're looking at.
Dwayne, the downtick in 2010, was that mostly motor vehicle?
We're actually ahead of what we are this year in motor vehicles in fiscal year 2010.
Okay, so what was the downtick there?
I can't tell you, right off the top of my head. It's going to, it's going to change, you know, from year to year, but nothing really sticks out to me as having happened. I'm sorry that I haven't answered that question. But, you know, even this year, 97.66, we still have a lot of big taxpayers, several big taxpayers that haven't paid.
That was, that was also in the Kate Fear example, that was last year also, was it not, for the last two years?
That taxpayer in Kate Fear is always late. I want to say they pay within the fiscal year usually, but they did not in fiscal year 2011. So I really can't, I really can't guess as to why that downtick is. I can, I can definitely go back and research and give a report to the board as to why we had that downtick last year. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of any one thing. Can you think of any one thing that happened last year? So the success in fiscal year 2011, first of all, to support this board, I think the staff, and I know at the end of the day, that the board understands what we're doing and how tough the job is, and we're trying to be fiscally responsible and stay in line with state law and get the money in, and that means a lot. And the same goes for the county management, department heads. I think I can throw a blanket out to all the department heads, because I think each one has helped us in some way or another this year. And that, that means a lot, having support of the department heads too. And the staff, you have to have a unique culture, a unique person, because we get fussed at multiple times a day. People don't like paying taxes, and it's a different environment up there. New programs and procedures. We try to stay on the latest technology. Last July, I'll mention real quick, the Board of Commissioners allowed us to start using those quick response codes that you can scan with your mobile phone, you know, that technology. At that point in last July, we were the third local government, per my research, in the country to start using those QR codes. One local government was a small town of like 3,000 people out in Texas. The other, which launched it about, about the same time as we did, was New York City. So that tells you how far ahead of the game we were. Since that time, I was in Best Buy a few weeks ago, in the actual store. On every single item in the Best Buy store, they have a QR code. It bridges the gap between the in-store purchase and the online purchase, because you can scan that code, read reviews about it online, directs you right to that product. The Sanford Board of Realtors, a few months ago, announced that it's going to start using QR codes on those listing forms. And on the real, I've seen one on Realtor signs out there. You can scan the QR code, it takes you to an online video of the property, whatever it may be. I was even in Food Line a couple weeks ago, grocery shopping, walked by the peppers, I think it was bell peppers, it was wrapped in plastic. The bell pepper had a QR code on it. So these things are becoming incredibly popular, and the more popular they become, the more people are going to know what to do with them. And of course, the enforced collections and foreclosure program are second to none. So what's next? I believe this is the last slide. Continue focusing on improving service and communication. I'll say that, I know the board is very adamant, as well as I am, about going out into the community and giving presentations and making sure that all these programs are disseminated to the taxpayers. Back in March, we had scheduled a presentation at the enrichment center, two different presentations. It was, you know, save money on your taxes, or tax 101, something along those lines. Well, it got to be about a week before we were to give the presentations, and we didn't have the first person signed up for it. So what we did, kind of regrouped, got with the enrichment center again, and more or less snuck it into one of their diners' clubs meetings. So once we got out there and people saw that we were actually trying to help them, and we weren't there to shake them down and check the taxes and all, it was good, it was really Live chat, the live chat has been incredibly successful. You'd be surprised at how many people end the live chat conversation with, wow, I love this live chat, or this is so great. People really love that, allows them to multitask, so many different features within the live chat software. Back to the QR codes briefing. That's the QR code, kind of looks like a scrambly television, and those are the two programs that you can, if you pull up your phone, go to your market on your smartphone, type in one of those, you can download this QR reader, which enables you to scan the QR codes. If you were to, talking about new initiatives with motor vehicles, if you were to scan this QR code right now, it would create a calendar event on your smartphone. So you take out your phone, scan this code, creates a calendar event on your smartphone. You can add that calendar event to your phone's calendar, and I've got this one programmed in to say that it's a reminder, says your vehicle taxes are due today, August 1st, and has a reminder built into it. So if you add that event to your phone's calendar, when August 1st rolls around, then they get a reminder on their smartphone that says your vehicle taxes are due today. Free to create that, it's a free program that you can download to read it. We're working with a software vendor now to maybe include these on our tax bills. Every motor vehicle cycle we send out, put one of these on the tax bill. Now, when somebody scans it, and like I said, I'm an optimist, and I think that people will just miss these bills. So if they have a reminder come up the day it's due, maybe that'll help us in these motor vehicle collections.
Can that also be where you can consolidate the bills? Say you have five vehicles that you have to buy tags for. I do, and I get different buildings all through the year. It's hard sometimes to think, well, wait a minute, I've already paid some taxes at one time, and maybe, you know, I've missed something else here. Is there any way to consolidate that, so you're paying them all at the same time with this?
You would have to rearrange how you renew the tags, speaking specifically about motor vehicles. Remember, the tax is generated by when you renew the tag. So you go into the DMV, renew your tag, in about three months, you're going to get the tax bill. The fourth month is when it's due. So the only way, and that's, and that's just the law, the only way we could alter that would, it'd be from a user standpoint, you'd have to rearrange how you.
So it's not the county, it's the state that would control that with DMV?
Yeah, you would have to get your tags renewed at the same time for us to bill at the same time, absolutely.
Isn't that a private operation, the tag?
They are independent contractors.
Yeah. What position have they taken on any of the issues you've talked about thus far regarding the tag, when they get new tags and all that? Or do you include that?
Well, there's a lot of debate with this House Bill 1779.
I understand that. I'm talking about the independent dealer. Have you had any discussions with them on what you're working on to see what their position might be? That's one of the busiest places I think I've ever gone, that there wasn't something free.
But all of those are contracted with the state, so they have to go follow state law, right?
But it doesn't mean they don't have an opinion, that shouldn't have some ideas, is what I'm asking, and have we done that?
We have not, I have not spoken with the DMV. I will say that, Lynette, if you want to, her sister is in charge of the Lee County DMV, and I don't know if she's had any, you want to speak as to what?
Sister-in-law.
Sister-in-law. You want to speak as to any conversations you've had with her?
The independent contractor who provides the service.
Is that who she works for? Lynette's sister-in-law.
She owns a franchise here.
Down here, in the area? Yeah, that's a good one. I'd like to know what they think might help us collect more tax, when you explain to them like you're explaining to us. It would seem to me that people down there may have a good idea as anybody in DMV. I guess I'd disassociate them with DMV because they're independent contractors, and you all call them DMV. I'd be offended.
We can, we can absolutely speak with them.
All right.
Absolutely.
Good enough.
Another initiative we're taking is the Community Property Tax Calendar. This tax calendar is embedded on our website, it's embedded on our Facebook page, and what it does, it gives a calendar of important tax dates throughout the year. It's good to have this on the website, it's good to have it on the Facebook page, but a unique aspect of this calendar is that people can integrate it within their own Microsoft Outlook. So whatever electronic calendar they use, whether it be Google Calendar, Microsoft Outlook, they can download this calendar and have it integrated with whatever calendar they use. That way, any important dates that we push out is automatically updated in what they're already using. Continue updating the website, make sure it's accurate and representative of what we're doing. Automation, make sure if there's an efficient way to do something out there, that we take advantage of it. And again, the community education presentations, to make sure that we are disseminating that information as much as we can.
Wait, I have a question. Is there, have we started the process of capturing or collecting and maintaining email addresses for our taxpayers, so that we can communicate with them more directly and less expensively?
We have, I have that as part of the blog. The blog has about 500 people subscribe to emails. So we could contact them that way.
Yeah, I'm just interested in seeing us move forward with that, because that, fast becoming one of the more popular things to do among local governments, is to, is to communicate with constituents via email. You would think, and even though email addresses frequently change, if they could be self-maintained, in other words, updated or whatever, registered and updated, so that you can receive more direct communications like late taxes and that sort of thing. You know, as we move forward in future years, we'd like to have the opportunity to become more, more electronic in our, in our mechanisms of communicating with citizens and saving the postage rates and the fees, and perhaps getting a more timely response from our citizens.
Right, and you'll find, and I guess it's common sense, the people, they will move out of state or out of town and not update their address, their physical address, mailing address, with the tax office, but their email address is probably not going to change. So a while back, getting to your question, a while back, I did consult with the collections manager in the IT department to see if there's any way that a citizen can go into our website or go into our MUNIS online and give us an email address. There's no way to do that in mass, there's no way to do that without our clerks having to go in and do it themselves. So we are, it is a very good resource that I hope to develop in the future.
Yeah, anything we could do where you could self-register and maintain, so as things get updated, phone numbers get updated, address location gets updated, that people can, can do that. That would, I'd just encourage that.
I'd like to make a motion that we charge the tax collector with collecting FY 2012 taxes, adopt resolutions, and accept settlement.
Okay, so on the abstract page of 74, the recommended action was to charge the town tax collector with collecting our fiscal year 2012 taxes, which means sending out the bills, right?
That's right, and giving us the authority to use enforced collections, yes.
And to adopt any resolutions as were presented here, and to accept settlement. Is there any further discussion?
I have one more question. On Kate Fear, are we moving, progressing any at all on resolving that?
I think we're worried that they are going to file bankruptcy. We have a lot of their accounts with Zacchaeus right now, a lot of their real property accounts. We just have to add the 2010 tax to that. So, yeah, we have talked with them quite a bit, and we were told at one point, I thought that they were going to come in and pay a portion of it. They did come in and pay on the primary residence they live in, which is really of no good, because any personal property they have is going to attach to that primary residence. So can still, even though they've paid on the primary residence, we can still send that to Zacchaeus, because there's a lien on it. Yeah, we're, we're doing all we can to move forward with that, and the other lower tax payers that are still out there.
That affects the Kate Fire, Kate Fear fire rate too, because the collection rate, so that bounces it up for everybody out there, their taxes, that's right. And we've got a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay? I'll just pass. I just want to say, good job, Dwayne. I send you random requests in the middle of the night when I wake up and think of something, and you evidently have some strange hours too, because usually, within an hour or so, you're getting back to me, but thank you so much for all this. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider the industrial development grant for Lee County Industrial Park. Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, Chairman, we've received this contract from the State Department of Commerce, and the EDA has actually asked us to go ahead and execute the document. I know there's some concern about the match of $166,700, but unless we make requisition for the actual funds, we don't have to actually follow through with the match just yet. It's our plan to have the EDA match the grant, but EDA wants a copy of the grant, so, you know, it's kind of like, you know, chicken, you know, or the egg, whatever we got to do here. So we're following their lead and going to go ahead and present this agreement for the board today for approval, but will not actually be attaching any requisitions for funds until the EDA grant is approved. So get that in place. Another thing the, and I don't have this on the agenda, but another thing the EDA is asking us to do, and I can go ahead and do this without the board approval, is they want us to go ahead and bid the engineering and architectural services for these two projects. Reason being is they would like for, number one, they want to see what the costs are going to be, and number two, they want to have them in place if the EDA grant is approved. So it doesn't cost us any money to send it out there for bid, and we plan on, we plan on doing that here in the next week or so.
The two projects being what?
The renovation of the Transmatic Building and the installation of the road, so.
Are you speaking of bids for plans or bids for the project?
We're, we're, EDA requires that we bid architectural and engineering services. So it's, it's a pretty straightforward bid, and it's, you can't take into account some qualifications, but EDA is very price-driven. And it's, you can't take into account some qualifications, but EDA is very price-driven. I think before they actually, you know, want to approve the grant, they want to see some, they want to see some action over here.
Madam Chair, I would motion that the approved grant agreement authorize the chairman to sign the required document.
Okay, motion has been made. John, I have one question for you. Does this renovation need to take place before CCCC can put the Caterpillar training equipment in there?
No, the part of the building they're putting it in does not have to be renovated.
Motion has been made to approve the grant agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the required document. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Moving on. John, you have the next one. Consider interlocal agreement with.
I'm going to pass out the. I'm going to pass out what the superintendent has sent back to us from the draft that you have in your, in your book. I don't, I don't really have a problem with anything that he has put in his agreement. He wanted to shorten up the agreement. Our agreement that we proposed to him didn't have some of the terminology for funding that they used. So he changed that up. And then also, he shortened it up where we basically had an agreement that covered two years back-to-back. He combined it into one, so it shortened it up a great deal. The main purpose of the agreement is to make sure that they are following through with the four hundred thousand dollar match, that they are going to use the funds as they have requested, which is for teacher assistants, tutors, and graduation ambassadors. If any of the funds are not used, they will return them. And the understanding that this additional five hundred thousand does not go against what is considered our annual current appropriation when the agreement is up. So, which is important going forward after the two years are up, so.
I have a question for the county.
Yes.
The, what would be the impact if we postponed, if we take a look at the LCSS proposed changes, if we postpone this to the next subsequent meeting?
I guess you can take five hundred thousand and divide it by twelve, and that would be the impact. They'd be minus two months.
We just catch it, we just catch it up?
We'd catch it up in August.
As the county attorney, so look at this one.
Dale has been looking at it, yes, and with Mr. Hall. So we have been going through it.
And do I understand you to say that you are comfortable with this?
Well, I, I, you know, I think there's, you know, some language changes mainly because of, you know, their terminology that they use, the contract we proposed to them. I think there was some concern about terminology as proposed here. You see, I think you have the school allotments in front of you. If we went strictly by the allotments, the previous contract that we sent them, we wouldn't be sending them any money. So the wording had to be changed to cover the discretionary cut that they have to make. And I think that's where some of the, you know, maybe misunderstanding or heartburn is over this deal. They've got two-point-eight million dollar discretionary cut, and, you know, they're taking those cuts across the board. So in, in the classroom, actually, they're taking some of it. So they laid off forty-one teacher assistants, and the money, the money they're using now, they'll be able to rehire twenty-six. So they still have fifteen being laid off. But if you look at the allotments, they're supposed to be fully funded for all teacher assistants. So, but they can't make two-point-eight million dollar discretionary cut without, you know, kind of going across the board and cutting in all areas. So that's really their determination how they're going to make that two-point-eight million dollar cut. And we've already made our decision.
Yeah, I, my reservation on this is, is that, is that there seems to be some fairly substantive changes to this interlocal agreement. I already had a couple of issues with the one as, as worded now. And I would like to, I would like to do this very deliberately. We're not talking about an inconsequential amount of money here. If it's not going to be a huge decrement in their cash flow for a month, I would think, let's take, let's make sure we've got this thing very carefully evaluated and, and considered. And then, and also, I think there's still a question mark in my mind about the TAs. My understanding was, is that, that our agreement, our reciprocal agreement with, with the county schools were that we were going to, he was going to fund all the teachers' assistance. And now I'm hearing we're going to have at least fifteen or maybe more that are not going to, that are not going to be funded. And I thought that was the whole purpose of doing this, was to make sure all of our teachers' assistance were funded. So I'd like to.
It was to go towards teacher assistance. I don't, he never represented to me that it would cover all of the teacher assistance.
He actually said it, wouldn't I?
He did?
He actually did.
But I thought that our, our original language said that that would cut, that would be, with the intent of, of funding all the teachers' assistance.
It just says going towards teacher's assistance. It doesn't say funding all, because with discretionary cut, obviously, they, they feel that they cannot cover all the teacher assistance.
Well, that's what, that was, been part of my problem with this all along, is how do you verify that? You know, I'm looking here at the state allotments, the formulas and the actual allotments for Lee County. And what I would like to see is budget versus actual type of thing, you know? If here it's saying that teacher assistants, you know, from the state are getting three-point-seven million, I'd like to see K through three, you know, the number of teacher assistants in each of those positions, the total dollar amount, know what the difference is, you know? Same thing with, you know, the central office administration. You've got allotment amount in the state of, you know, about seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. You know, the superintendent's salary takes up thirty percent of that. So, you know, where are they, you know, cutting some of these other expenses? I don't know. Every school is having to make discretionary cuts, you know? And so, you know, it's my understanding all along that this deal was cut, you know, in the event that teacher assistants and, you know, the, the classroom teachers did not get fully funded. I'm seeing these amounts. I want to know where they're still short on those two categorical areas for us to find.
I don't think they're short. They're making their discretionary cut in that area, and that's their choice.
I hope they know.
He's not representing that, you know, that the allotment wasn't there. But if you, if you're allotted fully in teachers, you're allotted fully in teachers' assistance, and then there's a discretionary cut of two-point-eight million, and they say, you go find where those cuts are, you can go make them wherever you want to make them. It's up to the Board of Education to make those cuts.
Although, I have on good authority that Speaker Tillis is going to set up a commission to supervise at each of these LEAs how these superintendents and Board of Education are making these cuts. And if they're making them in areas where we fully funded, I wouldn't want to be that Board of Education to be on that receiving end of violating that.
I heard him on the radio on Sunday, and our school system was not the one that was used as an example, but Robinson County was used. And they're, they're not only cutting teacher assistance, but also teachers still, and supposedly under the, under the plan, they're one-hundred percent funded. Well, you know, they're making the same statement that they cannot make the discretionary cut unless they, unless they make some heads roll at the same time. So, you know, it's, I don't, I don't, you know, what you're asking for also, I'm not sure that we'll get to see until October when they see, when they have to take the federal budget, the local budget, and the state budget, and they reconcile all of them and have to present that to us on October fifteenth. We would see it on October fifteenth. And I don't, you know, if we hold these funds too long, you know, they may not bring these people back, and that would kind of defeat the purpose of giving them funds.
Can somebody else get in on this?
What I'd like to say is this, we already budgeted this money. We have this agreement. And I want to see how this, what he sent us, affects the agreement. And that's all I want to know, you know? Are we still, do we still have an agreement? And if we do, then, you know, I don't, what, what we're talking about.
Well, I'd like to jump in here too. First of all, this agreement is unprecedented, and I personally think it's heavy-handed. I think that we are putting the school board in the box. And I think we're beginning to talk about micromanaging again as to whether this or that or the other pleases. And, and we're trying to second-guess how they are going to make their budget work. It seems to me like that we have an understanding with the school board. We have many ways of viewing it and checking it as the year goes by. And I would like to see us on good faith go forward and approve this and not further complicate the timeline or the school's ability to do what it has to do to be ready to go based on the budget they have and what we have allowed them to go forward with. I just think that we, to, to my mind, we're, we're getting into this rhythm again of sort of saying, we've got you by the, you know, we've got you under our control to some degree. I don't mean that to be a pejorative way of expressing it, but it's effectively what we're talking about. We're saying, you have got to jump through these hoops, you've got to please us. And, and I think that you, we're crossing a point at which, and I think the school superintendent makes this point, and Mr. Crumpton has said he and the legal counsel have signed off or are comfortable with this. I think you can just make this an agony if we're not careful. And I think that it's time for us to, to move on with this. I think it's time for us to get this approved and to stop trying to, to, to make them and make our own staff continue to work at micromanagement and the view of indices and measurements, which really, I think, get beyond where we need to be.
If I might add, I, I disagree respectfully with Commissioner Hayes in that I don't think it's micromanagement to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' dollars. We're talking about more than a million dollars here, okay? This is a fairly substantial amount of money. I think, I think before, and because it's unprecedented, I think we need to give very due diligence to this document to make sure, because we're obligating ourselves, not for one year, but for two years. And that we're obligating ourselves to make payments on something we've never done before. And I want to make sure that we've got every jot and tittle addressed correctly in this letter before we send it forward, before we authorize the sign-off on this, on this, this interlocal agreement. Because what we've done is we've obligated ourselves for two years for over a million dollars. And I don't want, I don't want the taxpayers to think that we are, that we are passe about the way we do our business, that we are very, we're very, we scrutinize everything that comes before us and that we are very careful with their money. That's what I, that's what my point is. And, and having been handed this thing, it's been marked through by the superintendent with, with, you know, thirty seconds notice to say, okay, let's agree to this. I'm, I haven't read it. I want to read this thing, digest it, and make sure that it meets, it merits, you know, the fiduciary responsibilities we have on this Board of Commissioners. And I'm just not comfortable. This whole process has been tedious this year, I will admit. And I hope that it'll, it'll, it'll smooth out in, in future years. But I, I think that because some would argue that we've been micromanaging, others would argue we've just been doing our job. And, and that's, that's my point, is I would like to take, if it's not going to encumber the schools unnecessarily, I would like to take another thirty days, review this, make sure all the documents are right. And I would add that with Justice, with Judge Manning's ruling today, now the budget's been thrown back into a tizzy again. Judge Manning ruled today that the appropriations bill with, with K-12 education is not appropriately funded at the, at the, at the pre-K level. So now that's going to throw another loop into the budget process, and it wouldn't probably hurt for us to shake that out to see what the impact is going to be, because I think we're about to get more money for, for, for pre-K programs into the, into the county, which might actually impact this interlocal agreement in some minor way.
Well, but we are covered in this agreement. If more monies come into the system, then we will be reimbursed for this. I just don't want to complicate this more than it's necessary. And I think what is important is that we do not encumber or handicap the school system to go on about the job they have to do and the complex budget situation they have to worry about. Think about us, think about them and what they have to.
Sure, Richard. And, and again, I'm not suggesting that we, we're never going to consummate this deal. I'm only suggesting, let's, let's be, let's be prudent, let's review the document, make sure that we've answered all of our questions. If we've got other discussions about what's happening right now, we got, we got another thirty days. It impacts the schools by less than, than sixty thousand dollars in, in one month. That's well within the noise level on their fund balance, okay? They should be able to survive knowing they're going to get caught up in a subsequent month once we execute the document with June.
In all respect, I, I, I actually not ask the question. The county manager was, was read it, and he's happy with it. And the county attorney's read it, and he's happy with it. We already have a budget, we already had an agreement. It sounds like it hasn't changed it any, so, you know, I, I.
Let me say that I appreciate what the manager and our attorneys have indicated. But I've long been a proponent of this thing of short notice giving me something and asking me to vote on it. I didn't like it from some of the outside agency, and I don't like it from the manager. It's not his fault, and I'm not blaming him. It showed up today with these changes. I think that we are entitled to a reasonable amount of time to review it and let the chips fall where they may. But certainly, I don't distrust any of our staff, nor am I taking that position with the superintendent. As a matter of fact, I don't recall during the budget session, anyone coming to the table with an idea that would, or recommendation that would eliminate that four-made and that two-made that we originally started talking about. Nobody did that. So, you know, I don't understand sometimes the criticism I hear on this board, about this board, when you've done nothing, nothing, but opened up the, the books and say, opened up the pot and said, take what you want. Well, it doesn't work that way, and it shouldn't work that way. All agencies receiving this money ought to be accountable. And if it takes years to make that happen, it takes years to make it happen. But when it does happen, nobody has any ill will toward others who might have gotten away with it, that's fine. But it comes a point in time where you ought to stop the train and get it in order and move forward accordingly.
I would move that we, that we table this for one more meeting, have it thoroughly reviewed, make sure that we've got any objections or any questions we still have about the agreement answered, and that, and that we, it become part of old business at the next, at the next subsequent Commissioners' meeting.
Okay, motion has been made to table this until we've had a time to review it. Is there any further discussion?
Just this, that I'd like, and I think this goes without saying, that Mr. Crumpton will find out as, as best he can what, what this means to the school system, that is, the timeline, the cash flow. I think we're, we're, we're going to take another thirty days, and I would not want that to be something that we would regret by delaying. So if you.
Yeah, we may need, we may have to meet before then.
Well, yeah, absolutely. But to do what you need to do to, since you had, since you had, I think, recommended, I see it here, approve the agreement. And we're, we're going to push it down the road a little bit. I think we need to know as completely as possible what the ramifications of delay means to the school system.
Yeah, I'd also like to hear from our legal staff too, to see if, if they have any concerns about the language, whether it's actually changed something or not.
Well, I want to say that this thing works both ways. The Board of Education had an equal amount of time to make known to the manager how soon they need to have this done. They said it here, I don't know when he got it, I know I got it this afternoon, right here. That's not enough time for me. So I'm not feeling saddened that it may exceed some expectation they have. All those things should have been thought of, that's why we pay staff, that's what we pay staff for.
Let me ask my colleagues this. How many of you signed onto this original agreement thinking it was conditional in the event that the state did not fully fund them for teacher's assistance and classroom teachers? I did.
I did too.
Okay, and now that it finds out that they're fully funded and they're not going to cut from central office or other non-classroom areas, I, to be honest with you, I'm just not comfortable with that. So motion is here on the table. All those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Madam Chair, could I clarify one thing before we move to the next agenda item? Just for the record, I wanted to make clear, you understand that the document you have in front of you marked LCSS proposed changes was a document the county attorney's office prepared, a comparison version, taking the final document that was submitted to the county manager by the LCSS. And actually, we physically put those changes into this document, but we can't get you. document, but we can't get you the original document.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see what the school had sent you, and then, and then we can see how that married up with this document as well. That'd be helpful.
Exactly. But what, what you have then is just the normal legislative format where what the LCSS didn't want is stricken through, and the proposed language they made is underlined, but we can get you the original document.
Yeah, that'd be good.
But that's our work.
Good.
To make it easier on you.
Please don't say anything anymore.
Okay, next item on the agenda was an item that was requested be added, EDC discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I asked for that. Should wait till my presser goes down. You know, I'll be quite honest, I, I've read some accounts in the newspaper articles about, what was it, the June 20th motion? And I was just stunned to read the reaction to it. If I'm not mistaken, the previous board selected Amy Darumpel and some others to represent a committee to meet with the partners and the EDC board to try and reorganize because of some concerns held by this board.
I'm someone of that.
Make point?
I'm someone of that.
Okay, all right. I remember that, because I asked you to take forward a recommendation that I had for moving the director under the county manager.
And it was presented.
It was presented. I also talked with, I know one city elected official, if not two, and I think it was two, who also agreed that his management should be under government. So when I read this article, as if everybody is so shocked to include some board members, I didn't have any idea it was going to, I, I was appalled and ashamed of some of the members. You shouldn't do that. I've been here for years saying, if I get three votes, we're going to rearrange economic development because it does not work the way it is currently set up. So for any of our board members to say, well, I didn't know they were going to do that, it came as a surprise, the city didn't know, that's not true. They may not admit, but we've had these discussions. We've talked about these very same things, and no one is of individual or personal target. This is about an operation that we fund two-thirds of and maintain the same level of authority as the other two. But what's even more important is, on questions that we need answers to at the time we're discussing some economic development matters, we can't get the right answers because this person reports to another board that we pay. Now, you know and I know, if you'll tell the truth about it, that's not the way you would do business. You know that. You know that. So yes, I did vote to do that, but the intent is not to destroy EDC. And as far as what was done, you have to have some position on the table to take those steps. And the motion that was given was the only way to start the process. That's all it was about. And now, from this day, or from the 21st forward, all three or four boards can get together, or you can select a committee, get together to put in place some things, other than changing the reporting of the director to the manager. All those other things are open for discussion. And at no time do I recall the motion indicating we were getting out of the EDC business, that we were not supporting economic development. And I take exception to it. And for those who were at that last meeting, who felt like Commissioner Womack was taking advantage of my good name, I would cheerfully tell you, we had no discussion, he made his own comments, whatever they were, but I can definitely tell you, I can speak for me. I will speak for me. So whatever you heard, if you didn't like it, or you agree with it, you can still call me. You can contact me if you want to know what I think and what I said, because I'm happy to tell you. And, and for the future, it, it needs to be understood that the city and the town of Broadway could always start their own EDC if they wanted to. There was no need for either one of those parties, and I don't know what they did. If they moved their money, that was on them, that wasn't on this board. This board simply said, we can't continue moving like we are currently doing. And that's where the vote came from.
Madam Chair, I would, I would like to also clarify that, that at no time have, have any of us said that the EDC would be completely dissolved. That was not part of the motion. In fact, we, I went to great pains to specify that I would like to have the new position under the county manager effective December 31st of this year to be called the Economic Growth Office, so as not to confuse it with Economic Development Corporation. That certainly there would be changes involved in the EDC and their source of funding, because they would no longer, after January the 1st, be receiving funds directly from the county, that we would instead, or at least for the short term, be funding our own, our own initiative. But that the EDC, like, I'd say, I would hazard a guess, more than 50% of the EDCs across the country are privately funded. They're not funded by government. And, and in many places, they don't even have EDCs, they just have other types of, of mechanisms for economic growth. And the idea was, is that we're not really, potentially we're disabling the EDC, but we're certainly not suggesting that the city and the town of Broadway have no authority over the EDC, nor the Chamber of Commerce, or the Committee of a Hundred, or anyone else who's a partner, because the EDC can survive and go, go forward if it chooses to do so, independent of the county funding. Now, we didn't, we, I never said in the motion that we had all the answers. We certainly don't. We want to make a transition. We want to change what we're doing today to a, to a different form of economic growth in the county. And that may mean to some, a de-emphasis on incentives, it may be to others, a more, a renewed emphasis on small business, businesses already located in Lee County and trying to grow them. It may be more emphasis on jobs growth as opposed to economic base growth, which is what's been the focus of the EDC in years past, is the base, the economic base, the tax base of Lee County. We're, right now, if you, if you were to poll the citizens of Lee County and ask them, what's number one, the number one problem we need to attack in this county, they'll tell you it's about jobs and job growth, good jobs. We're not doing enough to, to grow local jobs through business expansion and retention here in Lee County. We spend a lot of time swinging for the fence to bring the big hitters in here from outside the county. So the whole idea of making this transition was to, one, to make it more responsive to the will of this board, I should say, of the position that does economic growth, to make it more responsive to this board, to make sure that we are, we can be held accountable as a Board of Commissioners for the expenditure of the taxpayers' dollars in this pursuit of economic growth. Right now, we would have to point the finger at the EDC and say, well, if there's anyone to blame, it's the EDC, but it's not our fault because we don't have as much authority as we want. My argument is, is that if we're going to be held accountable, then let us be responsible and have authority over the, over the funding and the, and the work of that position, so that we can then, so then the taxpayers and the voters in subsequent elections can then look back at us and say, you didn't grow the jobs like we wanted you to. And we hold you responsible, and we're going to replace you on the Board of Commissioners because you didn't do what we wanted you to do. We now can, they can point, the voters can point the fingers at us and say, we held you accountable and responsible, and you failed to do your job, or you did a magnificent job, so we're going to reward you with reelection. That's, that was my point in this whole process.
I think the question I hear, this is, how is the city of Sanford, the town of Broadway, and the county going to work together on EDC and the director report to the county manager? That's the question I hear, I think.
I have a comment too.
Well, let me answer this question.
I can answer that. Well, it's, you know, I look at it the same way as the planning director. How can the planning director represent the town of Broadway and Lee County when he's a, when he's a city employee? We have these agreements between the other parties that allows for, you know, input from everybody. I have input in what's going on in planning, zoning, probably not as much as I would like, but, you know, it's, we have a process there, and it seems to work most of the time. And I, and I would think that, you know, if, if the city and the town of Broadway have issues and want to discuss economic development with me, you know, that would be, you know, I would never close my door to that. I do, I do want to say that, you know, if, if, you know, I've been thinking about this quite a bit since the motion's been made, but, you know, it, it's pretty clear that the emphasis for job creation, job growth in this county now is coming into my office. So, you know, if that's going to be part of my responsibility, I want you to know that, you know, we may swing for the fence every once in a while, but, you know, you have to have a complete strategy. You have to cover all areas of, of economic development, and that, and that's what we plan on doing.
Yes, and that's one of the problems that I had, was there doesn't seem to be any real good, clear strategy for, for sustained job growth. We may have some for a little while, and all of a sudden, we've got unemployment again. Have some for a little while, and unemployment again. So the, one of the things that some of us have been doing is taking a look at different models of economic growth and strategy and saying, what's working for other places, both in-state and out-of-state, that could give us a, a better, sustainable job growth that we can count, count on, rather than just throwing money at whatever first comes along. So we've been doing that research, and I would encourage anybody, whether it's on this board or the city councils, or whatever, to take a look at some of the models that are out there today that are, that are being successful in getting good sustained tax growth. Some of them are models that are almost 100% public funded, or private funded, they're not public funded at all. The counties and the cities participate, and, and by, you know, providing infrastructure and things like that that they need. So it's, it's not that we don't want to work with everybody, it's just that our local taxpayers are bearing the burden of it, but not our, we haven't reduced any of the taxes for them to show some gains. We haven't provided stable workforce to show some gains. And that's what we're looking at, is what, what can we do? What you, is, is there some other structure out there that would work better? And I, and we've seen some. Now, would it fit Lee County? We haven't come to that determination or not yet. But I think it's something that all of us need to work and, and talk about, not, you know, just this board, but also with the cities, and, and maybe turn some of that, all of that over to them, and then we participate, you know, as a minor thing, so we wouldn't have this question about, do we need to control our budget?
If the city, county moves along and is towards another direction, and the city of Sanford decides they're not going to participate, what does the county have to offer? The city owns all the infrastructure, they own the water and the sewer, what do we have to offer precisely? Incentives in this board's been against us, so what do we have to offer?
I'll tell you, there is legislation pending in the General Assembly that will provide for rural counties to get the infrastructure they need without having to be annexed. You know, it's, it's in the pending stages, but it's, it's working its way through there.
We don't have anything different. We've had the same, if, if we were separated, we have the same condition we've always been with, going to them and asking them to provide trade services for us.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to-
But the other thing I would tell you, in response to your, your question was, if, if we ask that the positions report directly to us, that's our position in the matter. They can choose to do what they're doing now, or the same thing we're doing, saying, you will report to our city manager, you will report to Broadway town manager. None of that, nothing stops them from doing that. But if they elect to leave it as they are, the difference might very well be, we're standing here talking to economic development about a particular project that we want to engage in early, and we don't know who it is, or we don't know any of the background, but now we're having a personal report directly to the manager. Well, they would be in that same position, they wouldn't have any idea, and they'd be at the mercy of the director whom they also pay. And if they elect to leave it like that, I'm not in opposition to that. I'm not in opposition. And you say, well, how does this serve two managers? How does this serve two now?
Just a question.
Okay.
Hey, just an answer, just an answer.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say again that, as I did on the 20th, that I thought that this was untimely and unnecessary. The resolution that was passed, and it certainly wasn't on the agenda, and so we didn't have this, the luxury of looking at even the fundamental basis of the resolution. It was voted four to three, I would remind you. So I would say to you with all respect, three of the members of this commission do not agree with you. I think that the concept, sir, please, I, I think that the EDC manager reporting to Mr. Crumpton is, has the potential for it appearing to be, and in fact, being, under the thumb of the county commissioners. That is decisions that would otherwise be made perhaps more broadly and for the benefit of the entire county, and for the benefit of other people in this county who see differently from you. I think that if this manager is under Mr. Crumpton, and I think it could work that way, I mean, I, I don't think that it would not work, but I think that it puts us in a position that is, would be my, not my preference. I like the model, I like the idea of having a separate, independent Board of Commissioner, Board of Economic Development that we have, that brings in the best business and industrial talent that we can bring around that board. There's never been a question in my mind since I've been a commissioner that we could not improve it. And Mr. Reeves, from day one, I know that you've been dissatisfied with some of the reports that came in, and I think that that process was underway to try to improve that. We've had three or four meetings with them now on a quarterly basis. The director certainly gets the message that they need to continue to sharpen their work and to make it satisfy all of the commissioners, and, you know, not the least of which is the fact that they've done a terrific job. I mean, this county has benefited greatly from the economic development initiative that we have through the years. I mean, here's a report right here, '07 to '10, that is just completely filled with the types of contacts and the types of business growth and industrial growth that we've experienced, not the least of which was Caterpillar last year. I'm just concerned that we were abrupt, that we did not take into consideration the city and Broadway. They're, they're very, I, if you, you were not at the meeting, I was there three or four days ago, whenever, last Thursday, and people were astounded, astonished, and incredulous about the, the presentation that was made by Mr. Womack, not believing that there had been that little bit of time and effort and courtesy put forward to consult with them. They believed that they were our partners in this, and they have been. And, and yet, we decided unilaterally to say, we are devolving this EDC as of now, the vote was taken, it will be finished up by the end of this calendar year, we're going to transition into something else. If you like it, fine, if you don't, that's fine too. To me, that is not the way we should be working with the city and the, and the city of Sanford and the town of Broadway. They were offended, many were, about the, the fact that they were not consulted about this, this change. And, you know, we, and Mrs. Darumpel did a very good job, I believe, in trying, with these partners, to try to begin to improve the way they represent themselves and, and how they could do it even better. A lot of people are very pleased with the outcome of EDC, and they have worked with large, medium, and small businesses. You can't just say that all they do, Mr. Womack, is swing for the fence. They have tried to do everything they can, but I would say to you, that when you swing for the fence and you hit one of these giants, and you need to have that in your, in your repertoire, you really do make quite a difference. Meanwhile, we've got to be doing it all. I mean, any, common sense tells you, we've got to work with small, medium, and, and large business. business. Again, I think that Mr. Hughes, if he remains here, will be able to work just fine with Mr. Crumpton. But I think the impression that's been given to this community, anybody who really observes and is sensitive politically to what goes on, and this new board, they're very concerned. They know that there has been a record of putting...of diminishing the importance of incentives. I think they are very important, personally, and I think you have to use them to compete effectively with other counties which do. And I think that just to say and to sort of imply, and it's been said and implied, that we are going to more or less get out of that business is a mistake, just flat-out mistake. We can't disarm in the face of what other counties are doing. We just cannot do that. And so I would just say to you, my feeling, my sense of this, is that I think, I was looking ahead at this document that Mr. Womack had put together, and I'm looking at the last paragraph on page one that says, that the Board of Commissioners will complete a draft economic growth strategy for Lee County by September 30, 2011, and then coordinate and receive feedback on it from the city of Sanford, Broadway, Sanford Chamber of Commerce, and it goes on with these different organizations. I think that there's a better way to do that. I think that they should be brought in on the strategizing for how this could be done, you know, so that they...that we reach back out to them and say, we're not going to give you a boil-down plan, react to it. They may say, take your boil plan. I think if we say, we need your input on the front end, we would like to reach out again to you, let's do this together, it will be better than if done separately, I think they would appreciate that, and we can get this thing back on track.
Well, Mr. Hayes, I appreciate your comments. Certainly do recognize that the impression was there, those comments have been passed on repeatedly, and they've been properly documented in the Sanford Herald, I would also add. I think they've been a lot of...and then I watched the city council meeting, I saw the reaction there as well, so I think they've been properly presented.
And at Broadway.
Yeah. And the town of Broadway, I think Mr. Parks went to that meeting. I'm not suggesting that people's feathers weren't ruffled, they certainly were, and change comes at some degree of pain now and then. And certainly, you know, in November the 2nd of last year, the people spoke, and they had the good wisdom to put certain members on this Board of Commissioners, and it shifted the center of gravity a little. And so now we're gonna try something a little different. Now, I never represented this two-page document that we handed out at the meeting last week, nor that we circulated among the commissioners here as being the final word, certainly did not. I represented this as my draft concept of how we would move forward with economic growth in Lee County. I welcomed feedback, and that's the way I represented this document at the meeting last week with the EDC board. You mentioned the word "they" earlier, when you were talking, you were addressing my last paragraph on this first page here. They are all represented on this document. We're gonna approach them and seek their feedback and their input as we put together an economic growth strategy. Reviving a remark that Mr. Parks made earlier, we don't have an economic growth strategy in Lee County. I've defied, for the last year, I've defied anyone to show that to me. I have suggested some models for economic growth, but they've not gotten any resonance in the community, because the EDC board before was independent of the three entities that were funding that board. They represented an independent status, and they've shown themselves, for whatever reason, not to be responsive, or I should say, fully responsive, to the will of any of the three entities. Therefore, we've made a change in how that structure's gonna work, at least for the amount of funding that we provide. Now, that's not to say we're gonna operate independent of the city of Sanford or the town of Broadway. We certainly welcome and encourage their continued collaboration in economic growth in this county. Everyone that's represented in the town of Broadway, the Sanford Chamber of Commerce, the city of Sanford, the Committee of 100, the...all the other organizations in Lee County, all are Lee County taxpayers that this board represents. There's no reason why that we can't represent their interests and put together a first-time economic growth strategy for this county with everyone's input, and then ensure that the funding that goes to pursuit of those objectives in that strategy are under the close scrutiny of this board and executed under the direction of our county manager.
Well, two points. The approach is one that I differ with you on. In other words, this suggests that the strategy will be put together, and then these entities will give us feedback. The Board of Commissioners will complete a draft economic growth strategy, it says, by September 11, and these others will be asked for feedback. My point is that we have sort of let them go. We have said sayonara in so many words, and they may say, we will go our own way now, because they may not want to react. They may feel that you in particular, since you seem to be the point person on this, you've been very vocal, you've got a lot in writing on it, and I think that that is developing a sort of personality for this board in this process, if you would respect that, for better or worse, and it could be for worse. And yet, it's not to say that your ideas are not...some of your ideas are not valid, but there...some backs are up, that we're having some problems right now, I think, if you would test the wind. And, I mean, I know what I hear and see, and my people. So there's gotta be a better way to do this, and it was very abrupt, and...
Since we have a public hearing starting in 25 minutes, in the course of time, I'm gonna call this off. At some point, you know, I've been on this board for four and a half years, Commissioner Hayes, at some point, I want you to tell me what the EDC board does.
Madam Chair.
Because I have respect for all those people, but I also have a lot of respect for Bob Hughes, and his contacts with the Commerce and everybody else, you know, I mean, do they just meet once a month, and he presents them, they vote, and then they come here? So I'm probably missing something, so I need somebody to tell me, you know, what else they do, and how many businesses they have been responsible for getting...
Well, we should...it's a good question, and we should sit down with them and attempt to find out what they do in their executive sessions and how they run their business. I mean, I've been there, as Mr. Womack has, and I know that they meet monthly, and they talk about prospects that have come through those doors and how to deal with them, and they have their discussions, and they make their recommendations. I mean, I don't...that's not flawed, but it may not be everything it should be, and I think that's a...
Share with us what they want us to know.
Well, that's a little biased, I think. I don't agree with that, that they tell us...
That means it's the big one.
That they tell us what they want us. I think they're partners with us.
Partners!
It suggests to me, what you're saying, is that they come, that they are...give only to us what they want us to know, and I don't believe that.
You don't believe that?
Madam Chair.
Let me ask you this question. No, let me ask him this question. Did you not come before our board a year ago, the five of us sitting here that are on the board before the November election? Didn't you come before our board and tell us that they decided to not recommend the company to our board?
Right.
On their own?
Exactly.
So you think they have that right?
I think they have that kind of intelligence, and they have as a...
You don't think they work...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It's a separate...
It's not an intelligence, it's about do they have their right? Do they have the right? No, they don't have the right, because we fund them, they don't fund us. We fund them, we appoint them, they don't appoint us.
But they think that we respect their mode of operation? Huh?
They think you do.
Well, I did, and I do now.
And you did nothing for our board.
Okay, let me...
I resent that and regret it.
If you resent...
I'd like to say one thing. I'm not against change, as long as it's for better.
Okay, good. All right. John, manager's report, or do we...
I'm gonna suggest that we...
Take a little...
Go on.
I think we should probably break before this 12 o'clock meeting.
Okay. So do you...do we get a motion to recess?
Yes.
Are we not having a closed session?
Well, no, we've got a closed session, and Mr. Hughes is waiting in the hallway.
Oh, yes?
Yeah.
I'd go if you wanted to, or if you're quickly. He's got two items he needs to report to. I'm gonna do the closing session.
Okay, I'll make that motion for you or Doc, but let me ask you this question on the...in regards to Commissioner Womack's comments about the changes. Have we voted on that at any time?
No.
So it means nothing more than an article that indicates, here's what I think we would might want to consider.
That's correct.
So it's not been voted on, so there's nothing to put on the table. It doesn't exclude anybody at this point. The game is still wide open.
Yes, it's just saying that we're looking at a change.
Right.
Except that we have said that the EDC, as it presently exists, is going out of business. We have told them that they...
They're a 501(c)(3).
What are you talking about?
You put that out there.
You're changing the management process, and they believe that come...they said the other day, why should we even show up if you're gonna be making the decisions?
We're not making decisions for them, we're simply saying to them...
I know, but they think...
In order to make it, you know, and listen to people like you, I guess they would believe that. But I'm telling you, that I'm simply saying to you, that all we did was said, we gotta put you on notice before we can take any action, because that's what the contract agreement called for. And that's why we made the motion when it was done. Otherwise, you couldn't take...you can't wait to the middle of the year and go beyond that, and then start talking about making changes. Put it on notice.
Madam Chair, I move to go into closed session, discuss matters relating to locational expansion of a business in the area per North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, parentheses A, parentheses four.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.